This study session of Mohamed Seymour Board of Education is called The Order. It is seven o'clock PM, Monday, November 6th. At this time, I'd like to remind anyone attending in person, please sign in and silence the cell phones. I would also like to remind our visitors that in order to facilitate an effective meeting, we ask those who wish to make comments to the board through the screen. You don't have any answers. All right, roll call, please do each. Lam?
Here.
Jordan?
Here.
Seven?
Here.
Doc?
Here.
McCollum?
Here.
Vanister?
Here.
Here are the Stanford President's meeting.
......................................................
You have had a chance for review agenda. Is there a motion to approve the agenda as presented?
So. Start it.
Anyone with a discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? No? Not now. Um, we have no public comment, is that true? Okay. Okay, this is our meeting where we get to hear from our principals and from our superintendent about how things are going. So do you want to take us through our summit of designations?
Actually, Dr. Bagby.
Oh, Dr. Bagby.
I'm a little too angry on her. She gives up sending Nicole or moving gift basket.
There we go. There we go. All right, so we tonight, so myself, we're gonna give some update on the Illinois School Report Card and Summit of Designations here. And then our building principals are really gonna be taking the reins on all the hard work that them, their buildings and their teams have been doing this school year to create their school improvement plans. So that's kind of our agenda and our run through for this evening. So here we go. All right, first off, you have this in your board packet, just in case it's that same screen that's up there, in case you want something that's a little more right in front of you. Um, Illinois this year has increased the number of Summit of Designation ratings from four to five. Um, the top ones have stayed the same, but they've added one at the bottom, the intensive support category. Um, and so, as you can see there, the exemplary, just as a highlight there, that is the top 10% of schools in the state of Illinois that don't have any subgroups that have fallen in the bottom 5% or graduation rate under 67%. So if you see at the bottom of the page in front of you there, there's some of the different subgroups that the state of Illinois has for different categories. So some different types of demographics or programs that you can see in just a keynote to be have some of those subgroups, and we do have some of those subgroups in each of our buildings, you have to have 20 or more students in that subgroup. Okay, so if we have 14 kids as English learners in a building or something like that, then they will not count as a subgroup and we will not get data on them based on all of the factors that go into the Illinois School Report Card. When you see subgroup on there, that is what that is referring to. Okay, so great news from this is that kudos to all the work. I just get to report on work that's been done before me, so that is huge kudos to the four sitting behind me and those in my role, the person in my role prior, all the students, all the teachers, all the staff. Uh, this is a huge effort from everyone involved. And so, thank you to the Board of Education for your very supportive and very welcoming email in terms of the work that everyone has done. Um, I know that went out to several of our staff members and shared with our principals, um, and we very much thank you for your support, um, as this has been a huge team effort, a big collective effort from our students from when they come to the district, whether they come to us pre-K, kindergarten, first, second grade, all the way up through the high school. We don't get to the high school level without going through all the other grade levels. And so, um, our students have put in that hard work, our teachers have put in that hard work, um, and so it's very, very awesome to see that Mohamed Seymour High School has received an exemplary rating for the 2022-2023 school year. Um, so top 10% of schools in the state of Illinois. The other buildings, other three buildings have received some very strong commendable ratings, so there's a huge range for commendable. And we're gonna see on a chart in a minute how close, very, very close, especially two of our buildings were to receiving an exemplary rating. So lots of exciting news, um, and so we're just here to share a little bit about that with you tonight, and then areas where we know we want to keep growing, we want to keep doing better, um, and we're really gonna highlight those items as well. So as we go into this, um, for those of you who are at the strategic planning meeting, you saw a few of these slides, and then some of them have been updated as we reported on the 21-22 data at that time. These are just some items. You're gonna hear some of our principals talk about some of these different items. Um, we're gonna see it in some of the categories, but when you hear IAR, Illinois Assessment of Readiness, or SAT, those are those mandated state assessments that our students take in reading and math, starting in grade three, going up through grade eight for the IAR, the Illinois Assessment of Readiness, and then we have the SAT that our students take on their 11th grade year or as juniors. Um, our students also take the PSAT, um, eighth grade year, ninth grade year, 10th grade year, but those do not go into our state accountability measures. It's only the IAR and then 11th grade SAT. Um, and then we see the Illinois Science Assessment, that's given in grades five at the middle school level and then grade 11, and that's given in the different science areas for the National Science Standard or Science, Physical Science, Life Science, they take that. Um, we've talked a little bit about access and EL students and things like that, so that goes into our measures if we have that as a subgroup. Our students do take that every year. Um, yes ma'am?
Our EL students?
Our English Language Learner students. Um, and so there are students who, um, have come to us and they are learning English as their second language or third language or whatever that might be, they're learning here English for the first time. Um, and then we have our School Culture and Climate Survey. Many of you have probably taken this in the past, um, and that is our five essential survey that our students, staff and parents take attendance. We're gonna hear a lot about attendance in each of our presentations tonight, and one thing you're gonna hear a lot of conversation about is chronic absenteeism, um, and that is when students miss 10% or more of school days in a school year. Okay? And then graduation rates, you'll see that that is a very, very important measure at the high school, as well as making sure our ninth grade students are earning credits and are on track to graduate. Okay, so that's just a little bit of a rundown of the different state systems and tests and data that we collect for the state that's gonna go into our Illinois School Report Card. So we'll see here, right here, how the weights of each of these different categories, you have this in front of you on page two, um, in a little bit different looking of a chart, um, and then you have the definitions in case you want to learn a little bit more. If you want to dive into this at any point in the future, let me know, happy to do that. But what you're gonna see up there is your elementary and middle school, um, that IAR, the Illinois Assessment of Readiness that we were talking about before, you will see growth for students from one year to the next is a very, very significant indicator by the state of Illinois. 25% ELA, which is English Language Arts, 25% math, and then you'll see proficiency in math in ELA or English Language Arts at 7.5% each. So a big portion of that pie up there is on that Illinois Assessment of Readiness that our students take in the spring every year. Then you'll see chronic absenteeism, we get some points or some weight for that. Um, again, that is students who would be less, missing less than 10% of school days or more. That climate survey, um, making sure that we have full participation from our students is really what we get for that. And then the Illinois Science Assessment is that science piece, so how our students did in that. Then you'll see this ELPTP, that's English Language Path to Proficiency, uh, big long name, but that's really those English Language Learners and their progress that they're making. You're gonna see here on the slide in a second that we don't have any scores for them, because we do not have in each of our grade levels 20 or more students, um, as English Language Learners. So you're gonna see some of that data or some of those scores have been distributed to other categories. So we still get the points, or we still, it's not like the state just says, you don't have enough students, so you don't get that category. They distribute those numbers to the other categories so that we are on par with other schools in the number of points that we could receive. Okay, you'll see the high schools biggest thing, 50% is their graduation rate, um, and that goes into a four-year, five-year, six-year graduation rate, um, and there's percentages for each of those and grades accordingly. Okay? Any questions on any of those at the moment? Kind of a lot of info as to what goes into these, and then we're gonna look at where Mohamed fell.
I have a quick question.
Yes, sir.
Um, is it possible for an English Language learner, say, third grade, to no longer be considered an English Language learner by the time they get to high school?
Yes. Yes, in fact, it is, a lot of times the goal is within two or three years for them to no longer need EL services. We still monitor them for a couple of years, but yes, absolutely, and a lot of our students, um, do track into that progress of two to three years and then no longer needing those English Language services. So then, they're no longer in that category. Yep, okay, great question. All right, so you also have this in front of you. Um, this is where each of the buildings fell in those categories. Um, so you can see just a couple things I'm gonna note here. Um, green, so you see a lot of green on there, which is great. That means our 2023 rating is higher than our 2022 rating. So any box that is coded green, there was improvement from '22 school year to the '23 school year, so that's really good to see. If you see blue, we received full, no more points could have been given in those categories in 2022 and 2023. And you will see that is in a lot of our math, English, science proficiencies, um, that we were receiving full points. In fact, you'll see, like we talked about before, like math proficiency, we see some 8.35, some 8.04s. We're receiving more than 7.5 points. Just remember that is from points distributed from that English Language Learner Path to Proficiency, so that is why they are above the 7.5. If we had that category and had enough students in that category, we would not be above 7.5 for that. Yes, sir?
Some other point in time?
Yes.
Can you explain how they distribute those points?
Absolutely.
Doesn't need to be denied, right?
Yeah, absolutely. So there's a lot of calculations where they go into each of these in the background, um, and I'd be happy to go through those.
Yeah, thank you.
And how that works. So a lot of green up there, again, that means we've increased, you'll see that in some of our chronic absenteeism numbers there. Um, you want to get more points in that, that kind of seems counterintuitive, but that's really looking at the students who were not chronically absent. So if no students were chronically absent, we would have 20 points or 20 percentage points for that category, so the more chronic absenteeism we have, the lower that number is. And so, like we talked about before, I'm gonna draw your attention to this total score out of 100 points, that's the max you can get. You'll see this is the score that each of our schools got for the 2022-2023 school year. Okay, all of them are green, so that means all of them were higher than last year, which is awesome to see. And then points from exemplary. You had to have 81.33, so that was the cut line to be 10% or higher. Look how close some of our schools were. Uh, Lincoln Trail was .35 points away from being exemplary, awesome. Junior High was .17 points away from being exemplary, and then the high school achieved exemplary. So when we said that they were so close, like, we had some very, even Middletown Prairie being 8.46 points away, that is still significantly higher than a lot of schools in the state of Illinois. Um, so some very, very positive data, um, there that we wanted to share with you.
It was a commendable plus.
I know, it is.
What were you saying?
Great.
What was it? What, what, what were we?
Commendable.
Commendable.
Yes.
Because I think what is important for people to know is that the, um, range of commendable scores is actually very large.
It's huge.
Like you could get 60 points and still be considered commendable. Do you know what the target cutoff was?
So the target cutoff, yep, is on the back for you, I don't think I have it in the presentation, um, but for, on the back of your packet here, so the low range end to not be, so you could have had a school at the elementary or middle school level at 35 points, and they were commendable.
Wow.
So, and, and that's.
That's where I see that middle tops 8.46, and like you're saying.
I mean, like, that's why, like, I, just the fact that, definitely, we need a commendable plus. I mean, this is, this is, this is unbelievably amazing.
It really is.
Yeah.
It really is.
What percentage of schools fall into commendable then?
Uh, a majority, I would have to get that number for you, because it would be, so you have your, your schools that are below 10% and above 5%, so everyone in that range is going to be in that category there. So it's, it's hundreds.
I have to part with them to explain statistics.
Right.
Correct, so they have, they have so much in that commendable, and then there's very little in the targeted, comprehensive, intensive, and very little in the exemplary, so your commendable, yes, is, is your huge, huge area.
I'm sorry, keep going.
No, I'm glad you were.
But I just want to say that that is.
It is huge.
This is phenomenal. This is amazing work.
Yes, 100%. So huge team effort, and that's why I decided to have our buildings here to share even more with you as to the amazing work that they have underway. Just to give you, I'm just gonna give you some district-wide, and then buildings are gonna be diving into some of their more building metrics, so just as a little key highlight here, chronic absenteeism, the students who miss 10% or more school days per year, either with, with or without a valid excuse. So it could be a parent-excused absence, or it could not be parent-excused, or a valid health reason, or not a valid health reason, it does not matter. If they are not in school, they are considered absent. Um, and so what you're gonna see here is, this is the average daily student attendance all the way back from 2018, so 2018, we had 93.9% of our students in attendance, um, and then it, we're at 92.9 for last school year, so you'll see some things there. We had a lot of remote learning, as many school districts did in the state of Illinois during 2020, 2021, um, so things that might normally be counted absent if we were in some sort of remote learning or things like that, were not counted absent at that time. And then chronic absenteeism, this is our percentage of students who are chronically absent. Okay, so you will see in 2018, 14.5% of our students missed 10% or more of school days. Last year across the district, it was 20.6. Um, you'll see that about a 6% decrease from the 2022 school year to the 2023, um, and there's gonna be some factors that some of our building principals are gonna talk to that explains, um, some work that was done to, to support that decrease, um, here in a little bit, so I'm not gonna steal my, their thunder from that. Yes?
Good question, do we have, like, what the state averages for chronic absenteeism?
We are below it. Um, I cannot know it off the top of my head though, so I do not want to misspeak, I just do know it's, we are below it, so I could look that up for you and get that to you.
No, that's fine, as long as you know we're below.
Yeah, we're definitely below.
Sorry, I mean, if they're not in school, um, that could be for sporting events, that could be for any number of reasons, is that correct?
If they're at a sporting event and they're having to leave early or something like that, that is a, they're still at a school function.
Okay, so it's, now that I put that, it's simply them not attending.
Yes, whether it is.
They're sick.
Sick, they went on a family trip, they.
Funeral, whatever.
Funeral, yes.
It's a full day.
And then.
It, it will go down to the high school level by period, even the junior high level, it will go by period.
That was my next question, is it one period that they might be gone, is it a percentage of the day, is it at one, 10 minutes late when it's a day?
No, it's a great question. Yep, so if they are, if they get an absent code, it's not the tardy codes.
Okay.
So if they get an absent code at all within a period at the junior high or the high school, they can be considered chronically absent within that period.
Okay.
Okay, so if they have more than, so if you think about it, 180 school days, 10% 18, so roughly two days per, per a month.
I, I'll use my, yeah, one of my children is an example, had races.
Yep.
Their dentist appointment, their orthodontist appointment was during the first period, missed it a number of times, does that count in that?
They, so what it's gonna do is it's gonna add up then to full days, so they will have that if they then had like other appointments second through the end of the day, but they would not, because that's not adding up to a full school day. So they do minutes at the elementary level, so K5, they're gonna do minutes, so it's gonna be looking at the total number of minutes lost, um, and they add that up for whatever our school day is. Um, and then, so however many minutes a kid lost divided by the minutes of our school day, if it's over those 10, 10% of school days, that's what they count that as. So we send, our technology team over there, they send numerous amounts of attendance data, along with our EOPs, about every period, every minute, we have to report all of that to the state of Illinois.
And then, can you then take that group of students, that is, that, and track their performance in grade point average and all of these other issues?
Yes, so that's actually leading into Mr. Benedict, he's gonna have some things that they're working on at the high school level, um, so I won't steal his thunder on that, um, but he's gonna have some exciting news of where they're trying to start to track some of those different factors, um, that go into success, and then each of our other buildings is doing a lot of reports, gaining reports, and maybe doing some different measures to try and curb the absenteeism, um, from a proactive approach, um, in a lot of cases, and sometimes, you know, what can we do to support, um, to make sure students are here, because as we know, students in attendance with our teachers, there's nothing that can replace that.
I agree.
Yep.
Chronic absenteeism statewide was 28.3% last year.
Okay, somewhere 20.
8% lower.
Do we know is it the same kids?
I do not know some of that specific detail, um, they probably have a very good idea. Um, so if any of you have anything you want to open and say, if not, they will reach out to that, but in some cases, yes, some cases, no, it just, it depends. Sometimes things happen or come up that, hey, COVID had a.
It's interesting, if you look at the overall fitness numbers, the, the 2018 and 2019 overall percents in the 93 range are pretty close to this 22-23 numbers, but the, but the chronic numbers are up.
Correct.
So we're concentrating the absences in a fewer number of students that are missing more days as a group, does that make sense?
Yes, that makes sense.
There's less fringe.
Yes, yes. You're looking at that exactly.
Yeah, we've got students who are very, yeah, are very much here, are very much engaged, but then we've got a group that's seems not as much.
Absolutely. All right, so that is where global picture, district-wide, and then each of our buildings will be getting in more detail as to where their building is at, um, and what they're doing about absenteeism. So each of them will have information on that, so all very good questions. Any more district-wide attendance sort of questions? Okay, so now we're gonna look at some overall data. Uh, if you were at the strategic planning meeting, you saw this, mine is the 2023 graph. Um, and so what you can see here is, this is the Illinois Assessment of Readiness, which our students take grades three through eight, this is the English Language Arts, um, and so this is an overall where our students are at in grades three through eight. Um, some of our buildings are gonna be showing some other data points, whether it's this, um, or some benchmark testing that they do, but what you'll see is 2019, 2020 was the pandemic, 2021, just as a key point with this is, we did not have all of our students test, that was really an optional, um, some were at home, some came in, um, and that was across the state of Illinois, so those numbers, um, do not have all of our students from that year in it. And so what you're seeing there is just where we're falling, a couple of keynotes to see there. Uh, we have not quite recovered from 2019, um, fully yet, but we're making some large gains. Um, and so you can see those gains, we really want to see those green and blue bars growing, and we want to see those red and orange and yellow bar shrinking. I mean, that's, that's the end deal with that. And so you can see on the 2019-2023, we had 49.2% meeting or exceeding state expectations, and right now we are at 43.5%. So we're making some gains, we see that blue bar, which is the exceeding, getting larger, um, we see that green bar getting larger, and we see some shrinking happening, um, and those orange and, and reds and yellows. Okay, so we're trending in the right direction, still work to do, um, but we are trending in the right direction, um, when it comes to our IAR/ELA scores. So that's kind of where we're at with that. This is math, so same test except for math as your subject level, we're gonna see a lot of the same trends here, we've recovered a little bit more quickly, um, with math comparative to our English Language Arts, I think that just goes to pandemic, teaching, reading, and doing that sort of work remotely, those, these are just two different subject areas, um, and the ability to do that. So, um, 45.2% in 2019, we're meeting or exceeding, and we see 43.4 meeting or exceeding at this point, again, green and blue bars growing, um, we want those yellow, orange and red shrinking a little bit, obviously, so the more shrinking we see on those, the better, um, so we're starting to make some gains and recovery there as well in math. SAT, this is 11th grade only, um, this is the only state mandated, um, tested area, we do take the SAT, but the state does not take those into account. Um, and so what you're gonna see here, we have an extra year, a couple of years of data here, um, so what you'll see is 63.2% meeting or exceeding in math for SAT/ELA back in 2017, um, currently we're at 53.3%. Um, and so, a couple of things, we do see, um, some, some areas of growth, especially coming out of 2021, again, some, some students didn't take that assessment, again, that was optional, um, but this is also an area where we're starting to see some of our red bars growing a little bit, um, and so Mr. Benedict and his team and us have had some conversations about some steps that we might need to start thinking about, um, as we see that partially meeting, SAT only has four categories, you probably saw IAR had four category, or sorry, five categories, this one only has four. So, um, we're seeing some green and blue, um, either grow or stay stagnant, but we're also seeing some of those yellows probably go more into the red instead of the green, um, and so that is an area of growth that we do need to look at. We'll see that trend in English Language Arts on SAT, we're gonna see that in math as well. Um, so just some things that we've identified, um, that we're gonna need to focus on. So here we go, we see that in math similarly as well, um, 65.4% meeting or exceeding expectations in 2017, 2023, we're at 57.9% meeting or exceeding on those expectations. Um, so this is one data point that the state takes into consideration. If you remember from the slides previously, the major thing they take for high school is the graduation rate, that's 50% of that overall score, and then this comes in at a smaller percentage rate.
Hey, can we talk about this data real quick?
Yes.
So I'm wondering about correlation between math, IAR math, IAR, I guess, and SAT, and in particular, I've been looking back at a couple of slides, because I, IAR math scores through, through eighth grade, obviously, it's a whole group of students.
Yes.
Look, like, when I'm looking, I don't know if there's five compared to four, but there's that red bar, are you thinking that on IAR, the orange and the red would correlate to the red on SAT? You see what I mean?
Yep. Yep, that's right around where that cut score is.
Okay.
Um, that the state sends for that, so yes. And then, at each of the different grade levels, we see some grades with tremendous growth in gains, and then we see others with smaller amount, so it really, when you get down into the grade levels, we see differing things, um, that also might be going on, and just, I mean, another thing to point out, I mean, we're looking at one grade here, like you said, right?
Yeah.
Versus a conglomerate, um, of a bunch of different grades.
So SAT is a graduation requirement, right?
Yes.
So if kids don't show up to take the SAT, they still have to take it at some point before they graduate?
Yes.
Okay, so we are getting a full.
Yes.
Of all of our.
Yes.
Great.
Yep. The only exception I would say to that is they are like medically exempt because they are in the hospital or something extreme like that, that would be, but yes, we do makeups and all of that to get those kids in and get them in. Yep, and if they don't take it their 11th grade year, it'll go fall on our 12th grade, their 12th grade year, their senior year, where we do have to catch them.
Oh.
Yep.
Thank you.
Great question. All right, so overall, I'm just giving a key summary here, um, but our buildings are gonna go into a lot of the things that we have been doing. So we've been focusing a lot to start this year on our math instruction, um, you'll, you have seen and probably heard some of the Intermath, K5 math implementation, um, our elementary teams during their pack time, we've tried to institute a professional learning community time, really focused on their math implementation, what they're doing for assessment, having conversations about their pacing, we've had some professional development days with our instructional coaches that have gone really, really well, um, really focusing on their pacing, which, these are the, the next line there, the three things we really told them we were gonna focus on year one, three read strategy, which is really just a strategy to make sure all of our kids can access that curriculum, um, and the, the problems behind it and breaking those down, and that they're engaging in mathematical tasks, um, and some of those tasks are very similar to what we'll see on some of these state tests, or real world type of problems, things like that, so it's not just like rote memorization and problems all the time. Um, just those sorts of problems are more real world, thinking about those actual tasks that can be meaningful. Institute and early release days, we've been maximizing either for math or literacy pieces, but really focused more so on math so far. Um, and then the 612 level, um, as we've been able to get K5 underway, we've started, I would say in the past month, been able to reach out a little bit more on the 612 level, have some things in work for them for the January 5th, uh, institute days and some conversations, um, between myself, Mr. Benedict, Amy Rorig, our math instructional coach, and Dan Ryan up at the high school, and some of our next steps there, um, to be working on that. Uh, literacy instruction, we've had a team, both at MPE and LT, really doing a shifting of the balance, uh, online, basically course and book study, um, that they have been diving into, some of our building leadership team members from our grade levels are interventionists, um, and so they're working to, to finish that up come in December, and then we're gonna have some debrief on our next steps with that. Um, we've had science of reading, Dr. Ethan Lynn came in in August. We've had science of reading, Dr. Ethan Lynn came in in August. He has been then with our Middletown Prairie staff. He was just with our junior high staff. This past early release and he's going to make his way to Lincoln Trail next and then the high school next, really trying to get some more thoughts around how we can support our kids in literacy. Our M T S S system, how are we supporting all of our learners? Our multi-tiered systems of support. How are we supporting all of our students at tier one and then students who need additional supports or interventions, tier two, tier three? Just needing a little extra time, attention, maybe resources. We've been focusing on that and developing some of those things out more. Our instructional coaches, your coaching cycles have been huge, not only in like group coaching cycles of hey, what a second grade need or fifth grade need? Or what is the, the high school math team need, but also some individualized ones. And they have been very, very busy. And so that has been phenomenal to see. And then professional learning communities talked a little bit about that with K five. They have been doing a great job with that start the year. High school started those on the last early release day and Mr. Benedict and I will be going through some feedback on those. But the initial thoughts seem to be very positive on those. So getting teachers together, collaborating, focusing on students, focusing on results is kind of our focus with those when you see that. All right. And then I won't say too much about this because Mr. Mills is going to talk about this and Mr. Benedict. But college and career readiness, not just all about the academic side of the house. Some of those career focuses and looking at some of our career pathways, our, our workplace learning, our A P, our real credit. Mr. Benedict's going to go into that quite a bit. And then how we can move the pace framework, so kind of our career in college exploration phases down to the middle school level. Now that the state has released a sixth through eighth grade kind of rubric or expectations that we have that now. So they've given us a little bit of a model and then how does that feed up to the high school? So I've given you a little bit of what that looks like. Going from sixth and eighth grade, really focusing on aspiration, self advocacy planning. Mr. Mills will go into that a lot more in detail. And then Mr. Benedict at the high school level, kind of what they're looking at for some of those college and career pieces at the high school. Any questions before I turn it over to Mr. Martin? Well, thank you for your questions. If there's anything you want to follow up on, please let me know. But now I'm going to turn it over to Middletown Prairie and Mr. Ryan Martin.
The right one. All right, well, we'll jump right in and piggyback on a lot of the things that Dr. Bagby started talking about. But before I get in there, one of the things I want to tell you guys, we all do our own personal goals as principals. And one of mine I really want to focus in on is challenging myself, you know, more of an academic leader in this building. Which is sometimes difficult as the day to day sweeps you up and gets you away from those goals. So Dr. Bagby has been instrumental and instrumental in helping me set myself up for that. I feel like this is more reflects some of the things I'm trying to do. So with that being said, I'm going to jump right to goal number one. It's about English language arts. Our goal here is for eighty percent of our students to score above the twentieth percentile in early reading. In A reading and spring fast bridge benchmarks. So I'll kind of break that down and what the heck that means in layman terms. Fast bridge is our benchmark that we give to our students and ideally we would give that three times a year. It has really showed a big challenge at us at the kindergarten and first grade level. To get that very first beginning of the year benchmark because it's a one-on-one test with the teacher and the students. And as you know, kindergarters don't come in being able to be independent for a long period of time while a teacher can do a one-on-one assessment. And each test takes numerous minutes, multiply that by twenty plus kids. That's a lot of time away from instruction for the teacher. So I'm extremely excited that our instructional coaches and our intervention team has teamed up. And they have been able to do what we call swarm. So you'll see up here, some of the key action plans are they swarm classrooms. There's seven to eight adults that come in, go to a room and they help that teacher just knock that test out. So you have seven to eight kids going at once, you know, each of them are doing two to three kids. We knock that class out and go into the next. That's really been helpful. We are trying to get the teacher more involved the second time around because we want, I had some conversations with teachers where they see some kids who maybe didn't perform as well. Because that kid didn't know whoever that was they were testing for this, had some performance anxiety. So I said, great, this is a great opportunity as we want you as the teacher to help us with this. So we're going to change that up where they're going to be part of the swarm and we'll have someone else teach the class while that's going on. But the teacher's going to join the swarm team in their own classroom, focused in on those kids who might struggle because I don't know who this person is. I'm just going to sit here and stare at them instead of showing them what I'm capable of doing. So with all, with all that being said, I really want to focus in on that second grade students in fall too. This is probably the most concerning data and it tracks from our data last year from first grade and the second grade that we had concerned with. If you look at the very bottom where it says zero to nineteen point nine nine percentile, we have thirty three percent of our students performing in that tier. And that is not what we want. We want in orders for our tier one, which is majority of the kids, core instruction. We want that to be below twenty percent. So we want eighty percent of our students performing above that. And right now we are not doing that. And that's something that we have started conversation with last year, but really attacking some of those things this year. And I'll get to those in just a second. If you look at the interim, so I talked about the swarm team and there is the beginning of the year is the fall benchmark. So those students in second grade were able to do that because it was an online test that the kids can do and the teachers are capable of doing that. There is some one-on-one teacher requirement, but it's not nearly as intense as the K one. So the second grade teachers did it willingly. They wanted the data. They jumped right in, which was awesome. The K and one, we're able to get that swarm team, what's called an interim benchmark. So it's still in the fall, but the kids have been in school for a little bit. So it, it kind of got, it's not a true right at the beginning of the year, but it's, we're going to have at least two data points when it comes to winter. We'll have some things to compare to. So, but you can see that interim scores, they're, they're pretty good. If you look at students in grade one, only nine percent of our students are falling in that twentieth percentile below. And kindergarten students, only seven percent. So it's a good start. Part of that might be that we start a school a little bit, but awesome. Those benchmarks do change as the year goes on and we, as we want our kids to have more, show us more as the year goes on. All right, so what are we doing? Well, Dr. Bagby talked about the science of reading. That is a big thing that is nationwide right now, a big push. We have P D in our building wide. We have numerous teachers volunteered over the summer to do that on their own. And I think some of them are really excited to jump into this and some aren't ready for next steps. Shifted the balance book study as Dr. Bagby said, is going on here as well. The fast bridge I talked about with the swarming and what is all this doing? Well, this is leading to me really trying to dive into this data and understand it more and starting those conversations. So the conversations with the data, with the coaches, with Dr. Bagby, that's been going to carry into the classroom teachers. I've already met with kindergarten team as a whole group. I'm meeting tomorrow with the first grade team whole group. I have a scheduled meeting with myself and Caitlin Schroeder, our instructional coach with the E L A side with second grade the following week. Which is going to lead into our winter benchmark, which is going to be the month of December. And before we go to winter break, I'm going to set up one-on-one data dive meetings with the second grade team who's really ready to get into this. And I've told them all along, I've been very open and honest. I'm pretty good at pointing out this is what's wrong, but I haven't been very good, like this is how you fix it. This is the resources we need. So that's the challenge. That's the challenge that I'm putting on myself. And these conversations have led to me really learning what fast bridge has to offer. Has so much more than I ever anticipated. And diving into some of these reports can really get into breaking down these, these six kids. Phenomenal awareness is what they are lacking. Okay, let's dive into that. Here are some resources of what you can do. Here's the recommended time of your spending in a small group. Here's how many days you are supposed to be working with them. This is the resource you're supposed to be doing. This is how you progress monitor them. All of these are conversations we're asking our tier one teachers to do in the classroom. That's different. Our teachers aren't used to seeing data like this. Our teachers are used to doing their core one and majority of students being impacted by that. This is not something that we're going to be able to send to interventionists and intervene our way out. We have to do something different at the tier one level and I think our teachers are a hundred percent behind that. Now they're like, how do we do it? So my whole conversation is we want to create what I'm calling a tier one toolbox for each grade because they're the experts. I'm not the expert, they are. How, how do I get my students to, I know this has really worked well with the kids who have a hard time writing. These are the kids who have a hard time not being able to sound out letters. These are the kids that can't chump and these are the things we are going to kind of keep talking about with these conversations. Also looking into the fast bridge and dive into that. And then eventually if we get to down the road, we're adopting a new E L A curriculum in the next couple of years. So I'm not trying to push outside resources, but there's some science of reading things that have been very well researched. And Caitlin Schroeder's been trained on Ufly, which is out of University of Florida. Some things that we're just scratching the surface on. Actually adapted some, some training I was going to do with second grade to dive more into fast bridge, what we have that's going to help us more. So these are all things that we are starting to talk about, which I'm excited about. Because it's, it's been on my to-do list to do for a long time, but the, some things just haven't been able to get me to that point. So I want to thank everyone involved with helping me have this conversation. The staff has been amazingly open to this and they're, they're hungry. They're hungry to get better. So how will I measure this at the winter? We're going to look at this data. I will set up individual meetings with the teachers. And we will dive into make some adjustments with what we're doing in the classroom. And then hopefully in the spring, we will show that progress and show that growth. And then looking into the years ahead, I would love to have that swarm team or whatever we need to do at the very beginning to get that very beginning fall benchmark for everybody. And, and we'll, you can look at, you know, if you've ever taught, it's, you get a lot more between fall and winter than you do from winter to spring. So I feel like that's where we need to get ourselves as a whole building and we're approaching that. Questions on E L A before I move on to, to math?
Okay, you said something about that second grade fall data. Seemed to be consistent with that group, that cohort. Okay, so then when they left first grade, you weren't surprised to see that data when it started.
And I, I presented this to my staff this, this afternoon, we had a staff meeting. And that was a question they asked. They're like, well, do you think that was because of the beginning of the year? It's like, no, it, you don't have that much of a slide with, with summer with this data that is showing us. And it's pretty comparable. I remember first grade, there's two scores. One was sixty two percent meeting, one of them was sixty seven percent, which is pretty close to what we're seeing here with the thirty three percent not meeting. Any other questions on E L A? All right, so math is a little bit similar of our goal, except I, I made a little loftier. I bumped it up to eighty five percent of our students to score above the twentieth percentile on the math spring fast bridge. And I'm, and I'm basing this on our, historically, our, our students have performed better in math than they have in E L A. So I really want to challenge ourselves to hit that mark. And part of the challenge is, like I mentioned earlier, we don't have that K one fall benchmark. We only did the, the swarming for E L A. So we will do the winter benchmark. Teachers will have time, some release time to get that. They will conduct the math and we'll support them with the swarm team to help them out with E L A. So we will get that math benchmark, but eventually I would obviously love to get that math benchmark at the beginning of the year too. But if you look here at students in second grade, right now twenty five percent are below at that very bottom percentile to zero to nineteen point nine nine. And so seventy five percent are achieving right now, but we want to, I want to bump that up to eighty five percent. So what are we doing for that? Well, we have a brand new math curriculum that we are adopting. And Dr. Bagby talked about some half-day release time that teachers are doing. I, again, I want to give a shout out to the staff. They have been open. They have been collaborative. They have really taken upon themselves to challenge themselves to do this with fidelity. Mr. Day and I have conducted several observations through the evaluation process. We have been asking to watch math lessons first with all of our teachers. And, and focusing on those non-negotiables that Dr. Bagby talked about. And, and all of the teachers that we have been watching have been following along with those pacing, three read strategy and task. And, and I've learned a ton with our post-conversations. Tell me more about this because, you know, I've never taught this. Talk, talk to me about what are you seeing? What are you noticing? So it's been really good conversations. And the math coach, Amy has been doing a great job of leading some of those conversations. And to my knowledge, I think the staff has really appreciated that time with her as well. One thing that, that Middletown is not doing right now is providing a math intervention for our students. Because our reading scores have been so low, I've really put it, I've kind of put my, I have four interventionists said, we got to hit this reading more. Because that's more concerning to me to get them up to that tier one level, reaching eighty percent of success. But we are having conversations. There's a, there's a program called Freckle. That our interventionists are going to get trained on that could lead to a potential math intervention. But that is something that we are hoping to, to have those conversations and start providing that before they get to Lincoln Trail. How are we going to measure the success? Same as the E L A, we're going to benchmark in winter. We look to have those adjustments, conversations, and then by spring, when we give this the, the third time for second grade, we hopefully will see that reach up to eighty five percent. And kindergarten first will be their second time taking it from winter to spring. Questions on math?
And the students that you tested or were screened was ninety six percent in the, the reading component, but only ninety one percent in math. Why, why the discrepancy?
So my guess, they take that at the very beginning of the year. My guess is we've had some move-ins from then, but I wouldn't think that would be.
Yeah, they got.
That much of a difference. Two fifty seven, two fifty seven.
So student screen was ninety six in, in reading and then two thirty.
There's thirteen less kids that were, were screened to math. My guess is a student missed that window and for whatever reason. Yeah, that's a good question.
But that's a, you know, that could sway your numbers.
But that is also a, a test given on the computer during a set time with the teacher. And I'm wondering if that, that student was absent and didn't have an opportunity to retake it, except for, make it up is my guess.
All right, is fast bridge adaptive as they answer it is?
Yes.
Do you have time built within your daily schedule for the classroom teachers to provide intervention for kids as far as like, like math reteaching or, and, and the reason I ask it is because you run a freckle. So the other kids would need to have something to do while the teacher's pulling an intervention group. Is there anything that we have people on that?
I have individual teachers that are doing that. It's actually a group that's doing a pilot right now with, it's called E Spark. And it's data driven as well. So, so we have teachers doing that. I would not say that there is, the master schedule is not designed right now for them to do that. They're doing that within, if they're doing differentiation through the classroom. Yeah, I mean, those are, again, they're realizing kids aren't hitting that and need it. So they're required to see what they can do to get those kids caught up. Other questions? All right, so my third and final goal is, this is a process goal, a systems goal. So P B I S stands for the Positive Behavioral Interventions and Supports. This is something that, that has actually the union kind of put together a plan of they wanted something in place to help with behavior. So this is a research-based system that they went with and it's been great of having some meetings to get this going. But this is something that's, it, it takes some time to, to lay out and roll out. I think Middletown's ahead of the curve in the, of where we are right now laying it out. Because of the, the leadership and the work of, of teachers on this, this team. There are several of them that spent their summer working and trying to get this in place for the school year started. And we are, we are further along than, than where I would expect us on, on year one. So why were we choosing this goal? If you look at here at the charts, I don't know if you can see that real well, but it has our August. We had eight office referrals. In September, we had fifty one office referrals. In an October, we had forty five office referrals. So for those of you on the board last year that heard my presentation, our goal was to start using Skyward to start tracking these. And we have started doing that. So in January last year, we gave a chance for that over. We were the only building out of the four not using that. We were using a different form of data collection. But obviously we have a system that's already in use district wide. That's what I wanted to do. So I bring that up. I looked at January to May and May was our highest month last year and there was only twenty six office referrals. So fifty one is just about double that. So our behavior is, is, is high. I mentioned earlier about wanting to spread my time out to academic and that's, that's where Mr. Day and I have really spent a lot of our time is, is working with behavior. So with that, Mr. Day and I have had some conversations, established some more roles and. And he's done a phenomenal job supporting me and supporting the students and taking a lot of leadership with the discipline. But also with that, him and I had a conversation about me stepping in and taking over the tier-one committee and being part of that. And he focuses in on the tier-two, tier-three. So he is leading those. So establishing those roles has been a big part of us playing this, this system out. I am involved in a team that we talk about monthly behavior meetings where we report current data and we actually just establish roles. And actually, the last one, we have a trainer that comes in and we found out that the admin should not be the one leading a lot of these things. It should be a, a teacher or another member of the, of the committee, not admin. So, so we've had that happen. We've established roles. We've had, at the staff meeting earlier this afternoon, one of our staff members, our ABL teacher was the reporter. She's the one that presented all of the stuff that we did previously in this, in this meeting and what we're working on. So I, I'm really excited about where it's going. Within that, there is a workbook that's called a Fidelity Tier-One Inventory Survey. And we have given that out already at the beginning of the year. And what that is, it's fifteen questions and the staff filled out where they thought we were in this process. Obviously, it's just beginning, so our, our data's showing us we got a lot of work to do. And that's driving these meetings that we're having once a month. We try to take two to three categories on here that we did not score well on, say, okay. Well, one of them was, do we have established roles? And we didn't, so we did that and found out I was not supposed to be doing all this leading. And, and we have a leader, we have a recorder, we have a reporter, we have all these established roles. So we can say, okay, you reported that. Back to the staff saying, remember when we said you guys didn't know if we did that? Well, we have that now, that, that's one of the steps that rolls into it. And there's fifteen steps to that, so that will lead us throughout the rest of the year on, on getting this rolled out. I do a weekly video for the kids and I try to have a segment every time that has a PBIS connection. And our three school rules, be respectful, be responsible, be safe. Kind of realize we say that a lot, but are there a lot of kindergarters that really know what the word respect means? So I really focused in on this whole last, this month and, and a couple of weeks ago, can put a whole month together on what is respect? Talking about and really hammering home what that is. And then what does it look like in our common spaces? So each segment, like what does respect look like in the lunchroom? Does respect look like in the hallways? What does respect look like in the bathrooms? And we, we try to continuously have the common language for our whole staff and, and focusing right now on our common spaces. We want to have teacher autonomy in the classrooms, to run their system in the classroom. But we really want kids to hear the same language pre-K through second grade about what's expected of them on the playground and then in the hallway, et cetera, et cetera. So I'm very excited. I think that we are moving in the right direction with this. I think it is going to pay dividends in the years to come. How are we going to measure this? I'd mentioned that tier-one fidelity survey. We are going to give that again in May and we will compare the results to see where we are. I, hopefully we'll see some growth, but I know we're not going to be perfect. That will lead into the following year of year-two rollout, what do we need to focus in on and continue to work on. Questions on PBIS?
So you mentioned the twenty-six office referrals in, from January till the end of the year. Is it common to see more of those at the end of the year or at the beginning of the year?
I would say February has the shortest amount of days, the most amount of behavior. And any school I've ever been in, it seems to be, for whatever reason, that is a, is a tough month. I do think October is, is common, you get, you get, or sorry, September, you get through August and you get the honeymoon period. Then kids start testing the boundaries in September, so I think that's usually a hot month too. But yeah, I, I would say February, for whatever reason, seems to be the highest, no matter where.
Is there anything you can kind of group, like what are the common offenses or is there like any recentness or that like that we're seeing?
So, so that is again, really the focus in on Skyward, cause you can start taking that data and disaggrating it, just like we're talking about. Time of day, location, what was it, physical aggression, was it disrespect? You know, those are the types of things that you can really dive into. And that's why we're collecting and putting it in Skyward.
Some of this is just like, we're just now starting to get all this data, sort of like, oh, we've always had this, but now we can dial in on it.
Yeah, I think, you know, Dusty and I can probably tell you what it is, because we're dealing with it all the time and what seems to surprise. But you actually see it, and you graph it, put it in a pie chart or something, that really shows you, okay. Now, I'm thinking this, but this is, she really showing me, this is
Where this data is gonna be able to help kind of train your focus on what we're, we need to put out.
So, so in those week, those monthly meetings, I think showing that data and can dive into it a little bit within that group. And I can maybe come up with, oh, we need a, we need a, something to do school-wide to really motivate us. And this is our focus, maybe if it's the bathrooms or whatnot. And, and put that attention deliberately with our teachers and our staff and, and our students to kind of keep an eye on. So yeah, that's, that's the, that's the idea behind this.
How often do you share it out with the whole staff? The administration?
So I've been, I've been once a month, starting this year. Like I showed that chart today and I, I did it, we have the first Monday of the month as our staff meeting.
Yeah, like drilling through to me would be huge to know, is it the same kids multiple times in the hallway?
Yeah, repeat offenders.
Classroom, yes, and is it force play or is it language? Or what exactly is happening in those spaces? I heard a really good statement at a training that I was at recently that when you have kids who are always red in behavior, we have a, we have a system that like they, they are, you know, reds or yellows or greens or whatever. If you have a kid who's always red in behavior, they're gonna always also be red in academics. Because your behavior is gonna pull you out of that academic situation where you are gonna lose out of learning. Now, just because you're red in academic doesn't mean you're also gonna be red in behavior. Like you might, you might be struggling to learn, but you might be able to sit and focus and learn. You're just not achieving at the level you need to be achieving at. But it really hit me how hard, how important it is to focus hard on that behavior. Because it may look like behavior, but it's really turning into an academic issue.
Yep.
So kudos to you for really focusing on this, the PBIS piece.
I agree, I think that's, yeah, that's, out of all these three goals, I think that's gonna be the most challenging.
Yeah.
Yep.
Correct. And I think not only from the student standpoint, but it, it causes burnout on teachers. And behavior's tough, it's hard.
It's hard.
Yep.
And, and there's teachers that are better at it than others for whatever reason. You know, they, they find that connection with students, but it's, behavior is so, so important, but so, so challenging. So thank you for putting this in, that, that to me, and I think these goals are great.
I agree.
And I, I like how you, you're owning every single one of these goals. And I, I like your leadership style. I feel like you're a very servant leader and you lead without authority. And I think that to me is motivating for staff and for students as well, so thanks.
Ryan, how many students do you think, what percentage of students do you think make up those?
So I, I have the data, but I'm looking at it off the top of my head. Out of fifty-one, I would say that's probably about thirty different kids. And then there's some kids who have five?
You came back, they came back to see you again in, in October.
I got some friends.
So what percentage of the students is that?
It's a small percentage. And, and those are the type of kids that might go to the next level of a tier-three intervention. Might have what's called an FBA where they are really getting a specific behavior plan and they're analyzing what is behind the actions that we're seeing, like why are they, they doing this? And that's hard, that's hard when they're five, six years old, because sometimes there is no clear-cut answer. So you've got to try numerous things and maybe fail at them before you find what works. And sometimes it works, it works, it works, whatever reason it doesn't. So, so through the MTSS process, we have some meetings for academics and also for behaviors for kids who, who might be performing well academically, but behavior's bad or that red-red often is the case. And then you have conversations about behavior and academics and are they impacting each other? Which one, what are we gonna do to change whatever is going on?
I think there's a metric up here that the domino effect to it all is what other learning is being lost because from another student's, student's behavior that another student can count on.
Absolutely.
That's huge.
You've got a big task too, the children's foundation.
Yeah.
These are the kids that have been first, I mean kindergarten and this is their first real learning environment and experience.
Sure.
How do you do, set that foundation of positive learning?
They come in all different levels, as you know. We're trying. Okay, I think there's, yeah, so did have a slide here on attendance. So I, I really want to point out two thousand twenty-two, two thousand twenty-three on the bottom and then our current data up on top. And I, just looking at this right now, if you go from August, we had two hundred ninety-three absences and cut that down to two hundred sixty-nine with an extra day in there. So we had another day and had less absences. September, there's nine hundred thirty-two, we did have extra day in last year. However, that dropped significantly down to six hundred fifty-nine. And then October, we had one thousand ninety-four absences and only eight hundred fifty-eight, same amount of days. So I want to give a big shout out to Mr. Day. He really listened and, and took notes from the other, Mr. Martin, that was at Lincoln Trail, who did a phenomenal job of this last year. And, and we, we did not do as good of a job as, as they did last year. So we really put a focus in on that this year. And he has a system set up where attendance letters are going out for every five, ten. And if we get to fifteen days, it's a little bit different. Because we're, we're getting to, if you get to eighteen, that's when you're chronically absent. So phone calls happen and we also have meetings set up that include the social work. So we call it MTSS meeting, we'll have several staff members around the table trying to find out why, why are we missing, what can we do, is there something that we can do here? It might be a simple solution, it might be more complex. We are trying to, to be consistent and communicate, because we want to cut that number of chronic absences down.
And ultimately, it's supporting the family too, right?
Yeah, cause she did so, not five-year-olds fall, they're not coming.
Right.
Yeah, that's on the, that's on the family. Which isn't necessarily on the family, if there are situations that they need support with. If there's a, a car issue or you miss the bus and you don't have a car to get to school, what do you do?
Right.
So again, kudos to you for figuring this out, good job.
You're, you're over five hundred blocks, right?
Yeah.
Three miles.
Yeah, that's huge.
Yeah. Yeah, so good start, now hopefully we maintain that.
Yeah.
All right, a few, a few academic guidelines to be building. I mentioned earlier, we are implementing a brand-new math curriculum. I think the PLC work has been the best, I think, has been in this building since I've gotten here. The amount of collaboration and, and buy-in with each other has been great. Trying to become more data-driven here at Middletown Prairie. I'm excited that the FastBridge swarming happened at kindergarten or first grade level to give us a fall benchmark that we can compare in winter. Data conversations are beginning here with teachers. Staff has been receptive to science of reading. And I said, said earlier, some groups are ready for those next steps. They're chomping at the bit, saying, what, what are we, I like it, what, what am I supposed to do? How do I do this? So that's what we hope to have some conversations about here in the near future. This is all great groundwork leading up to a adoption of the ELA curriculum in the next couple of years. And then I think the buy-in from the staff for implementing PBIS has been great. We have a whole school celebration on Wednesday. We, we have been using our lunchroom as the common space to put up our big pause if they earn them. And we're gonna do whole school bingo on Wednesday where I will, Dusty and I will call some shapes from our, from our office and, and put a WebEx out to the kids on their fast, on their smartboard. So a lot of celebration and kids have enjoyed it. We had another early, earlier one where kids got an extra fifteen minutes of recess. And it was nice to also get the teachers another fifteen minutes of break too, so we could help them out, so.
Who covered that?
Well, Dr. Bagby and Mrs. Northrup and myself and Mr. Day.
He was on the actual lady?
He was at a conference.
That was nice, that's like
Yeah.
I love this.
Yeah. So I threw a lot at you, and there's questions on any of the goals or anything in general.
Only one observation that I have. It seems to me like you are, you're pushing up from the bottom, which I think you're, you're addressing those folks that need the most.
Right.
But what do you do to pull from the top?
Yep, so those are same conversations we're having on data meetings. And we're, I'm really hitting those kids at the bottom. But you also got those kids who are way at the top. So already we're having conversations at the second grade level. Hey, I got this kid who's reading at this level and he's the only one. I got these two kids, so we're sharing kids back and forth, saying, you run that group over here. These two kids are struggling on phonics, they're gonna go in this group. So there's, those are the conversations that we don't have time, right? How can we use the time that we have effectively and impact and differentiate for all, all learners? Our teachers do that every single day at this level of differentiation. It's just that gap has gotten so much wider and the amount of attention on those kids. And the school's not used to seeing those numbers of thirty-three percent and below the twenty percentile. But we still have those kids that they're used to, that are way up here. So they're, they are differentiating, you know, some math and some reading for this year for sure.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Good question. Great job.
Thank you.
Squeezed through since I'm in front. That's right, that's right. So thank you for the opportunity to share a little bit about the Lincoln Trail. There, there is another one in Hardin, Kentucky. Funny story, they used to tag our Lincoln Trail in all of their Facebook posts. And so I would look at the pictures and I'm like, who are these kids? I do not know who these kids are, I do not know who these teachers are. So I called the principal, we had a great conversation about things, but there is another Lincoln Trail in Hardin County, Kentucky. So, but kind of before I dive into the goals, I just want to give you guys kind of a, I guess, a journey a little bit on kind of how we got here. Because the school improvement plan work certainly doesn't start tonight. And it didn't start at the beginning of the school year. So this actually started in the spring after we had our benchmark scores from FastBridge at the end of the year that our students take in roughly the middle of May. And so our building leadership team sat down and we were diving through that data. And we sit down with our teachers and we dive through that data with our data team meetings, which I'll talk a lot about this evening, in some different capacities. But we were looking at that data and just having some conversations about what do we notice? What are we wondering? And just having some of those conversations. And the overwhelming, I guess, message maybe that, that we were able to glean from those meetings were that we felt like we had a missed opportunity by not administering a FastBridge assessment three times a year. Prior to this school year, we were only administering that in the winter, in what I like to call Decemberary, because sometimes we would administer that in December. Other times it would make more sense, depending on how the semester played out, to do that when students come back in January. The past couple of years, it has actually been December. Again, as Ryan mentioned, students make the most amount of growth in the fall, when we're talking like August to December versus the spring. And teachers overwhelmingly felt like it was a missed opportunity to not have that beginning and endpoint until the end of the year. Felt like if we had just had this information in December, then we could have made so many changes to January and think about how much more we could have grown our kids. So one of the things I talked with Dr. Bagby about, probably before she ever officially worked here, was about benchmark three times a year. And so I feel like we're already light-years ahead of where we were this time last year, because we had some really good information starting in August. So one of the first things that we do to start the school year is we do administer that FastBridge assessment. It goes a little different for us at Lincoln Trail, we benefit from the fact that it truly is fast at Lincoln Trail. And so we're able to administer that to our students. That's one of the first things that they do in, in August whenever they come back. So there are two different reading tests that third, fourth and fifth take. And then there's one additional reading assessment that only our third-grade students take. And that singularly focuses on reading fluency, which I'll talk, talk a little bit about. So that's kind of what brought us maybe to this point. And as we look at our reading goals, interestingly enough, Ryan and I reading goals, interestingly enough, Ryan and I have very similar goals for the students at Middletown as we do at Lincoln Trail. And that's sort of really based on the need for that tier one, making sure that that level of instruction is really in check. So tier one curriculum that's implemented with fidelity, students should make a year's worth of growth in a year. Okay? And that percentage of students that ideally will be less than 80%, or I'm sorry, that would be greater than 80% above the 20th percentile. I always do that. Will need some targeted interventions. And that's where we target those students through that MTSS process that Ryan talked about as well. So we have that fluency data now. And that was one of the things that really stood out to us when we started diving through our tier one data was that 28% of our third graders scored below the 20th percentile in that area of reading fluency. And that's not something that Middletown started. That's not something, as I tell the staff, as Billy Joel said, we didn't start the fire. But here we are trying to figure out this problem of practice. I think it's very indicative of where tier one reading instruction has been the last few years. And that's why Ryan touched on the science of reading professional development that started even over the summer for teachers to learn more about what are those fundamental, just cornerstones of quality reading instruction and maybe how some of those tier one curriculums have sort of shifted away from that. So really, the only area where we do have greater than that 20% below is that area of third grade, of third graders below the 20th in that area of fluency. However, that continues to be a goal and a focus for all of us because you can't understand what you can't read. And so some of those other grade levels, like fourth and fifth, would still have to focus on that as well. So some of the things that we've been doing are just what tools, Ryan talked a little bit about tools in the toolbox. I guess we call them fluency first aid kits at Lincoln Trail, but working with our instructional coaches, working with our teams, my building leadership team, and then also my interventionists are doing the Shifting the Balance book study. And one of my interventionists has done additional professional development on Ufly, which is an intervention that is deeply rooted in not only science of reading, but teaching phonics. So taking that back to again, just those fundamentals of reading instruction. So we've developed some of those fluency first aid kits with the help of our instructional coach. But where I feel like a lot of the work is really being done are on those data team meetings. So we have those meetings with all teachers. There's a day devoted to each grade level. The interventionists kind of serve as guest teachers for the homeroom teachers. So that provides the homeroom teacher a period of time to sit down and really look through their data. And one of the first things that we started with at the beginning of the year in August was, let's just see what's in there. If we're looking at FastBridge data for the first time, that's okay. Let's dive into this together. Let's see what information is in there. What can we learn about students from this? How can we use that to inform your instruction so that we can ultimately grow kids? What we're using those Wednesday early dismissals for is we found that for our interventionists specifically, it's really hard for them to see groups of students on those days. I feel like we start lunch at 10 o'clock and then we blink and it's time for them to go home. We run a different schedule for Encore that day. It's just really, really hard for them to see kids. So what our interventionists are doing during that time is there are specific students that they really want to meet with the homeroom teacher about and just kind of problem solve and see how, what are we seeing in tier one in the classroom? What are we seeing in intervention? What other maybe related services does the child have? For example, if they have speech language, that is directly correlated to reading and getting those people together so that we can have some good conversations about how we can help our students. So if you think about like that continuous cycle of improvement, that's really where those data team meetings are focused. Questions about reading?
Do you see a difference between male students and female students with their level of reading in your building?
Um, I would say no. But it would probably be a better question maybe for homeroom teachers or for maybe even our interventionists. If I think back to like my last years in the classroom, I feel like maybe males were more reluctant readers. And I taught fifth grade, so it was maybe a little harder to sometimes find that just write book and to really find what captivates them and being able to help them, you know, grow that level of reading. I would say also, as a former special ed teacher, sometimes that was hard because you have fifth graders wanting to look very much like their peers. And the level of text that they're able to access might be significantly different than that of their peers. So trying to find ways where they still feel like a reader and accepted in that classroom while their text level might be considerably different was somewhat of a challenge.
What other data points were you using other than, I meant to ask this to you, Ryan, other than FastBridge? When you guys were digging into data, are you primarily focusing on FastBridge?
Primarily focusing on FastBridge for the three times a year that we'll administer that universal screener. But then FastBridge has built within their progress monitoring tool. So those students that are receiving intervention are progress monitored either weekly or every other week, depending on their level of tiered service. Teachers are also doing some informal formative assessments with them in the classroom, whether it be from running records or other comprehension checks, phonics screeners, those kinds of things. So they have some very formative-like data. But then in terms for us of like measuring student progress, it's mostly from that FastBridge.
That's great. That's all about that.
Yeah. So switching gears a little bit to math, the area that we really see, it's interesting, the area that we see where we do have greater than 20% of our students below the 20th is with fifth grade math and specifically the test that or the assessment that students fell lower on was that area of math fluency, which your mind may go to like fact fluency, right? Like basic facts of five times five. And that test is part of that. It's called the CDM, which is a curriculum-based measure for math. And there's a different one for third grade than there is for fifth grade because there are different curriculum things that they should know. But it's also strategy fluency. So it will give them questions like, they will have like a five times five, but then it may give them a question like 25 times 25. And they can't use paper pencil on that test. So it's really testing what strategy fluency do they have? So they can see like, do they have a strategy for breaking apart? Can they use partial quotients? What strategies do they have and it's timed? So it really, it's interesting. As I told my staff, if you haven't really watched a student take that test, I highly encourage you to do so because it's interesting to see some of the questions that they get. Third graders get multiplication and division right off the bat. And it's not something that we're, that we are expecting them to know at that point. So that's just kind of one of those things that it's interesting.
Fascinating. Because one of the biggest concerns I've heard from teachers all over is this notion that our kids don't know their facts. They're not taught enough that they're facts. And we just got into a deep conversation about how we also need to be understanding different strategies to use. And then you hear all these conversations about how Encore and, oh, they just need to carry the wand or they need to go next door and borrow. But not having multiple strategies up your sleeve of what are some ways I can break apart 25 times 25 to do that in my head, if all you've ever been taught is just the stacking method or you don't just keep the number.
Standard number, right.
You're not even know, it's going to be very difficult to do that in your head. It would be very difficult for me to do that in my head. Let me just.
And then it's a good conversation that we have with kids too, about sometimes the strategy that you have might not be the most efficient. So if your strategy is equal groups, if you're dividing 100 by 20 to make 20 circles and then put 100 dots all over, that will take a long time. That's not an efficient strategy. So sometimes we'll use strategies like that when teaching a concept. But then we, there's a need to teach other strategies because of the efficiency. So yeah, the test is very interesting. Again, this is not something that was a Middletown problem. Fifth grade, you know, they are where they are because of something third grade did or didn't do. But again, it's just something I think related to pandemic as those students have gone through, that it's something that is certainly an opportunity. So as we're adopting a new math curriculum, that's definitely something that they are talking about in those professional learning communities with the help of our instructional coaches. Really focusing on those three non-negotiables of math during our year one of implementation. And then our data team meetings, again, that are meeting on those Wednesdays or that we have three times a year with our entire grade levels are really focusing on what are the progress or what is the progress of our students and how might we able, might we be able to address that? Our staff will also be going through, I think, Ryan, your freckle. Is that right? And then we are waggle at Lincoln Trail. And so our teachers are, that's something that our homeroom teachers assign to students. And so our interventionists are looking into waggle to see what information can we glean from those reports, to see what are some of those growth opportunities? What are some things that we need to teach to our kids to be able to kind of address some of those lagging skills? Again, they should make a year's worth of growth in a year with that math curriculum. But those students that are below the 20th percentile, we need to help them catch up and address those lagging skills. So we also have some fluency first aid kits. We have a lot of math games. There was something that I sent out, those of you that have a student at Lincoln Trail in my parent newsletter for November about things that you could do with your students at home. Because the things coming home in math may look a little bit different than what they have in years before. So huge amount of research that shows the benefits of just playing board games with kids as it relates to math skills. Questions about math? Okay, so if you'll just maybe indulge me for a minute and look at that, if you still have in front of you that graph that Max has, that page right there that has the summative designations. If you just look across the row there at Lincoln Trail, there is one of those boxes that really stands out to me in the boxes that are factored into our summative designation. There's one box in particular that really stands out to me. And that was really the reason for this goal. Does anybody want to take a guess as to what that might be? It's our absenteeism.
Uncolored box.
Yes, yes. So it's not green because it's not an area that we did better in. It's not blue because it's not an area that we received all of the points in. So to me, that says this is something that is a growth opportunity. And for us to have a 14% chronic absenteeism rate, I feel like is significant. I ran attendance numbers last week in preparation for tonight's meeting. And I had at that time 124 students that at that point had missed 10% of the school year. So today is, I looked, today was day 56. So when I ran this report, I ran it for anyone that had missed five or more school days. So that would have put them on track and be chronically absent for the year. Did you have a question, Max?
Yeah, well, it's just an observation. Interesting that as we progress in age, our absentee, chronic absenteeism drops. And at the lower age groups is. And it drops progressively.
So one thing to keep, well, I think one thing to keep in mind is I'm only looking at thus far. So.
No, but I'm looking at last year.
Gotcha, gotcha, gotcha.
We were 17% at Lincoln Trail and then 14, sorry, 17% at E and then 14.
Those are points based off of the.
Oh, yeah. Never mind.
Yeah. Yes. Yeah. So I'm going to hope and do our absolute best that at the end of the year, we do not have 124 students that are chronically absent for the year. Because what will happen is, and we've had this situation where maybe a kid had the flu and there's only been 56 days. Now, if they don't miss many more school days for the remainder of the year, that will even itself out and that particular student will not be chronically absent. But then there are other students that if they come every day for the rest of the year, they will still be chronically absent. So I think Ryan sells himself short that they did a really good job with tracking attendance last year because one of the things that Mr. Day and Mr. Martin passed on to us at Lincoln Trail were their list of students that they were really wrapping their arms around to help support in terms of attendance and absenteeism. So what Mrs. Bowman, Assistant Principal at Lincoln Trail did was she reached out to every single one of those families and invited them to popsicles with the principals. Some of you were there for that event that we had at Lincoln Trail. And we did that just for third graders and invited all of them. But we specifically called those students that they were really focusing on and working with. And then we did that for our returning Lincoln Trail students that we had wrapped our arms around in terms of helping them with supports of coming to school. Many of them came. We wanted that first experience to coming back to Lincoln Trail for the new school year to be something that was positive where we could just celebrate them being there. And hopefully that's, that's an event that we can continue to do every year for any kid that would need that. So trying to be proactive in our approach, not getting to the point where we haven't made contact with families. We have a little postcard that we send. I can show you guys a copy of that if you're interested, that we send to families, just showing them, here's how many days your child has missed. If this trend continues, here's how many days they will miss by the end of the year. And then they can see if that puts them on track to be chronically absent or not. So we're making a lot of phone calls. Sometimes we will involve Mrs. Dill, who's our family engagement coordinator. Because again, as Sunny mentioned, there may be additional supports that the family needs, especially when we see patterns in absenteeism. When I, when I look at the absent or the recent codes, rather, if I'm seeing like maybe a mental health day entered or an unexcused absence or, you know, excused other, it's like, hey, how can we partner with you? So we've uncovered things like there, I mean, there are some kids that are fighting parents on coming to school. And so, hey, how can we help? Some medical issues that we didn't know about that we can help through, help families get through. So we put together specific plans to help support students. One of the things that we've also implemented is called Bulldog Connect. It's something that that intervention is, is a tier two intervention that's actually the same across the district. One of the things that that Ryan mentioned, that district behavior team that has been meeting met over the summer. And that was a tier two intervention that was developed from that. You may know it as, those of you that know PBIS, check-in connect or check-in check-out. We wanted it to be the same for all of our buildings. So Bulldog Connect it is. And that is really just a proactive, positive intervention where you have an adult who in our building, it's Mrs. Keeble, who's the best cheerleader you could ever ask for to start a day with a student with. And so she checks in with those kids, you know, just cheers them on, gets them ready for a great day. And then throughout the day, they check in with their teacher. So their teacher can give them very specific feedback. It might be on a specific behavior. It might just be on those three expectations that we have at Lincoln Trail. Be respectful, be responsible, be safe. So our tier one team, which kind of looks at those systems, looks at our Bulldog Connect data. We meet about every six weeks. We have less than 20% of our student population that's on Bulldog Connect. So we feel like that's a good situation. Wouldn't want half of our school to be on Bulldog Connect. That would be pretty indicative of a tier one challenge that we would need to be reteaching some behaviors. The other thing that is sort of new, newer, I guess, that we'll be implementing is our Encore Connect. And that is something that our Encore team is doing. Just how their schedule falls during the day, there's, it's the same timeframe in the afternoon, but it's a different person every day that has this open period of time. So every morning in the morning memo that I send to staff, I'll identify who that Core Connect person is and that teacher can reach out to that Core Connect person. Let's say there's maybe some ongoing conflict between two students and maybe that Encore teacher has a good relationship. Maybe Mrs. Dyer may want to sit down with those students, two students and just kind of figure out what's going on. Might make more sense for Mrs. Dyer to take, you know, Mr. Harriet's class so that Mr. Harriet can sit down and have a conversation with those two students. Maybe it's an opportunity for, again, for Mrs. Dyer to take a classroom and then for the classroom teacher and that student to call and just have a little impromptu conversation with parents about how we can help and support. Then that tier two and tier three team meets as well. And then we review the Bulldog Connect data. We review any other office referral data, attendance data. And then it's kind of a divide and conquer from there of how we can reach out to families, how we can help support what, it's interesting that to have Encore as part of that because they see all 790 kids. So they have a unique perspective on students and oftentimes see some different behaviors than maybe what classroom teachers do. And so again, we can't talk about academics without talking, also talking about behavior because it's those ready-to-learn behaviors that ultimately impact academics. And so those data team meetings will always include attendance data. And so those data team meetings will always include attendance data. They'll also always include any office referral data. Because if kids are not available for learning, either because they aren't there or because that behavior is not allowing them to be able to learn, then we also need to address that as well. So we'll use our attendance data, our office referral data. And then PBIS, which Ryan mentioned, has a tiered fidelity checklist for those elements of tier two, I think is where we're at right now before we take on some of those additional pieces. That'll be a good checklist for us as a tier two team to do together. Questions about attendance behavior?
I like the proactive approach. And you had mentioned about sending letters now, that if they continue, this is how they're going to progress. But I also like, more importantly, how you guys actually reach out verbally to them. Because I feel like if they get a letter, some of them might be like thinking that we're finger pointing and blaming it when we're not. We just want to support them. So if you piggyback on that letter and saying, hey, what can we do? What's going on? I think that's going to help. Can lead them in the middle.
I always want to assume positive intentions.
Yes.
And so I feel like
We never know what's going on.
Exactly. And behavior is communication. And so that behavior is communicating something. Again, it's not, I mean, typically our, our, you know, average age of a student at Lincoln Trail is nine. Okay, so, I mean, nine-year-olds aren't like driving the other way at the stoplight or something. So there, there's always something else that's going on. And so when I reach out to parents, it's, hey, this is not to pay, to play the shame and blame game. This is to offer support of how we can help. So if your child is fighting you on coming to school at, at home, let us help you with the fight. We're, I mean, if that means that we're opening the van door and you're pushing little Johnny out, we got it, we're going to give you a wave and, and tell you to have a great day. Because
That's going to be a day five versus day eight. Or yeah, six.
Yeah. Yep, so kind of that parent teacher conference was actually kind of when that time landed and actually afforded us on that evening opportunity to reach out to, to parents. So that's what we spent the better part of that evening doing was just reaching out and saying, hey, how can, how can we help support? What do you, what do you guys need?
Reward that, I mean, just like, how do you reward the right behaviors? I mean, absenteeism is a consistent issue. How do you get in it's 10%? How do you reward? I don't, and I don't know what the answer is. It's just thought that I like, get those kids to see like, you gotta be here. And is there a mentorship program? Some high school kids, like, what does that look like? And how do you fix it? That's, my mind keeps spinning there and I amend you for trying to address it. But I think if anything, take some creative solutions.
Yeah, well, we have one student that is assigned a job in the morning. And like, we really try to emphasize like, hey, we need your, need you here every day because like this job needs to get done and you're the person that's, that's the best fit for that. So we need you here. I think it's about just celebrating, kids do well when they can, right? And just celebrating those kids whenever, whenever they do come. So I'd, I'd rather you come at nine o'clock than not at all. So I mean, if that's you calling to school and say, hey, I missed the bus, mom's already at work, could you come get me? Yep. If that is, you know, structuring their day a little bit differently. So that we have, you know, making sure we have kids that come in off the bus early so that they can make sure that they have breakfast. If that's providing snacks to kids, you know, during the day because of some food insecurity at home. If that is, we throw it all out there. And, and, and that's what's great about those data team meetings and those problem solving meetings is it's, it's whole child. Oftentimes, parents are invited to those as well of, hey, how can we help support? Like, we want them here 180 days, but we get that sometimes they can't be. But how can we help get them here as, as many as we can?
I'm really interested in learning how the addition of the D students has changed the approach
Yeah.
to disciplinary action. Are you seeing that? Is it more efficient? Is it more effective?
Yeah, well, you can divide everything by three now. So no one wants to just solely do discipline because I feel like that will burn you out faster than, you can spell discipline. But that, that role has been integral in, in attendance. So that's something that Mr. Novak updates on a weekly basis. We have a spreadsheet that we keep so that we can see, oh, hey, somebody hit five. Now let's start having conversations. Or one of the entering criteria for Bulldog Connect is three office referrals. So then we can start having conversations of, okay, is this a student that we really need to look at this positive support to help? And is instrumental in getting that started? So each student has a, like a data tracking sheet, if you will, so that we can show those to parents, show those to kids, so that we can celebrate on those days whenever they're just really meaning expectations. We call it like a graduation. Whenever those students don't necessarily need that intervention anymore. And we've even looked at some of those students as mentors for kids that are kind of newly coming in into Bulldog Connect.
So it sounds like it's been pretty effective.
Yes, yes. Especially as, as it relates to the attendance and office referrals, just like managing that data piece. That third person has been, has been crucial.
Thank you.
All right, so just a few academic highlights. I want to brag on our math team from last year placing seventh out of, I can't, Mr. Harriet would know instantly how many schools there were. But a lot. And we were the only school outside of the Chicago area to place in like the top 20. That team, they are doing that again. Their first meeting is this Friday. So I'm excited to see what that new team does. And that's just for our fifth graders. And we have three or four different homeroom teachers, fifth grade homeroom teachers that, that are the coaches for that. Just to kind of share a little bit about what some of the pictures are. The plant in the top right-hand corner is from Mrs. Prather's room. And this board, you guys actually approved the donation of that item that was donated, I believe through Farm Bureau, that was donated to Mrs. Prather's classroom. And so they, they did all of the planting, they, they take care of all of that. They have done two harvests from that now. I had a pretty delicious salad delivered to me from Ivy last week with what they were able to, to harvest from there. I think Mr. Bowman is maybe making some salsa for the kids with the fresh cilantro that they have growing. So that's been, that's been really interesting just to see their investment and time in that. So thank you guys for approving that. And that's one of the highlights. The, underneath that is a group of some of our fifth graders. Just to kind of highlight the cooperativeness that runs throughout all of our classrooms. That would be specifically a mystery science unit that they're doing. And then the picture next to that really shows that math curriculum being implemented. So those tables have all been covered with like a vinyl to basically make them like a whiteboard.
So you didn't buy it now, like you just covered it?
It's much cheaper to cover them in, in vinyl. Physically responsible.
I have, I have all of them.
So you can buy it in a big roll. And then because we have a pretty amazing custodial staff, they're able to cut that to the exact size and roll it out so that there aren't any
We're the district that has more of a less.
Maybe a wrinkle's in there and it works just, just like a whiteboard. We have those in our steam lab, many of our fifth grade classrooms have those. And so they're able to do a lot of that math problem solving right there on the table. They can make their, their thinking visual to their partners as they're problem solving. And then to the left of that is, it's a fifth grade, another fifth grade classroom that is hosting their morning meeting. And that is what all 31 of our homerooms start their mornings with, is a morning meeting. It looks different in, in each classroom as it should because there are different classroom communities. But that is one of the elements from responsive classroom, which is another behavioral support that our teachers have received training in over the years. And so that's what they're, they're starting with. One of my favorite times of day is to, we have a question of the day or sometimes it's a problem of the day at Lincoln Trail. If you follow us on Facebook, you've probably seen those. Truly one of my favorite times of the morning to just listen to the conversations that happen around that problem of the day. Especially when it's math, because they're not always right. And oftentimes, there is not necessarily a right answer. But to hear their, and this is really the, kind of the purpose and intent behind it, is, is to hear their conversation and their explanation of why this is their answer is, is truly interesting. You learn a lot from those informal writing samples. Like, okay, so maybe some diagrams we could probably use as a teaching point. Vowel pairs might be to be reviewed. So it does really give some, some good information. But one of the things that we're seeing post-pandemic are those struggles with just communication with each other. Became a very isolating time. And, and some kids have kind of struggled with that, that social piece being reestablished. So if that's something that gives them a prompt to have a question about every day, there are two things that you see kids lined up for in, in the morning at Lincoln Trail. And it's to see what the question is of the day and to see whose name has been added to the Hot Chocolate Friday. So that's also another table that has the vinyl on there that you can write on. So, and then I think just another academic highlight that's truly been a joy for me to watch is that new math curriculum unfolding and being implemented in our classrooms. The three-read strategy and talking with teachers about the, the benefits of that. And then also some of the struggles that they're seeing as it relates to some of our students being able to access that text and problem solve with them on how they're overcoming that has truly been interesting to see. And I'm excited for, for where we're going with that as, as we continue to dive more into that specifically with assessments.
How do you get on the hot chocolate?
So there, you're, you're all invited. Come by, come by anytime. But there is, as part of our just school-wide expectations and focus, there is a focus for each month that we, that we put out for the year. And so November's focus is that Lincoln Trail students show gratitude. And so that, that's what they're focusing on this month. We've had Lincoln Trail students are respectful, Lincoln Trail students are responsible. And then through our morning shows, Mrs. Dyer is making those with students the day before during her little bit of time at the end of the day. And then that's ready for the next day. And then the Hot Chocolate group is the only ones that get to do the live morning show on Fridays. So they know that that's, that's the one time that it's live. The other times, Mrs. Dyer's working on the pre-recorded for them. So just kind of one of the perks, I guess, of being able to do that. But that's definitely something that they, that they value. And that, and that just goes back to what are some ways that we can recognize the good efforts of our students? And then, so staff can recommend, and really all they have to do is just write their name on there. Kids will write their name on there, but their handwriting is a little easier to do.
Easy to spell that last four words.
Yeah.
That'd be cool.
Other questions for me?
Great work.
Well, thank you guys again. Thank you for the opportunity to share.
Yep. Thanks for being here.
Mr. Melo, wait a minute. Does anybody need to take, I mean, we've been going
You should.
Okay.
We need a break.
Okay, well, go to the bathroom. Okay, well, go to the bathroom.
Right, and and getting kids excited to set a goal, meet the goal, and then getting something. So those are all, you know, big, big ticket incentives, small ones, um, and it's, it's not perfect, but we're hopefully increase overall attendance and keep decreasing that chronic absenteeism. So, um, and student service team reviews that, that data. We have reports that run automatically, we get that on Fridays. Um, and then, you know, as an administrative team, we're reviewing bigger picture and come up with ideas. Um, we just had a team leader meeting, uh, last week, last Friday morning, discussing, um, like the second semester point, everyone who, who was already at basically nine days, what are we gonna do and how can it not just be on the admin team or student services? How can it be a team approach? How can teachers have conversations with kids of like, we need you here? What can we do to help you? Or whatever that looks like. And and it's a gamut of reasons, like others have discussed, you know, um, and oftentimes it's, we reach out to the families and they just, they don't know what to do sometimes. Or it's a medical issue and as long as we know, I mean, we're here to help you in any way that we can and just keep kind of trucking along, um, and wrapping our arms around all kids. So that's how we're back when, you know, attendance at the junior high. Um, and hopefully, uh, well, like I said, increase overall attendance and decrease that chronic absenteeism. Questions on attendance? All right. All right, MSGH administration staff will work together to implement the pace post-secondary and career expectations for the twenty-three, twenty-four school year. Um, this is something, uh, working with, uh, Mr. Benedict, and this is a six-twelve thing, um, that for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year, um, the state is saying we have to have this post-secondary and career expectations put in place. We do a lot of it already, but it's, we're gonna formalize it. We're going to, um, align it, right? There may be something we've done in eighth grade that we now need to move and shift down to seventh. Um, and a lot of it is, you know, for example, like sixth grade, it's going to be, um, explore interest, right? What are you interested in, right? Um, and and a lot of this can be done through our elective courses when, when we have, you know, our elective courses, our band choir, our steam behind the music and agriculture. When they're doing a unit, it could be, you know, hey, did you know that there's a career in this or that, right? Uh, and just working that in, um, and if you're not in band or choir, you're taking all four of our, um, other electives. So you get a nice, nice taste as a sixth grader of each of the electives. So you're not locked in. So, um, and then in seventh grade, it may be, um, helping kids, you know, recognize, um, the, like, what are they interested in? What are their strengths? Um, you know, if you, if you like the outdoors, it might be a really good idea to find a career or a job where you can be outdoors, right? Um, uh, and and just helping them recognize that. And then in eighth grade, it's more of, you know, one of them is attend a career conference, which we've been doing for years, our education for employment office in Champaign. Um, puts one on at the iHotel, we already do that, but we're gonna formalize that, right? Um, our eighth grade staff does a wonderful job of having speakers come in and talk to the kids about different careers. Um, you're not locking in as a six, seven, eighth grader, but it's more of what are your interests? Realize that you can change, um, and this is how you explore. Let's have these conversations, getting him ready for, um, nine, nine through twelve. So, uh, Mr. Rembley will head that up for us, um, as the counselor. We've, we've, this, these conversations have been happening for a year and a half now. Um, and then we'll work with the high school counselors, um, just to make sure that we have a solid plan in place, six-twelve, not just our building and their building, it's one big plan. So, and we'll be ready for implementation, um, the following, following year for twenty-four, twenty-five. Any questions on, on this college and career ratings junior high? Just a couple of highlights, I want to recognize that our Illinois Science Assessment, um, seventy-eight percent of students met or exceeded, uh, increase of six percent from the previous year. Um, and that's our eighth graders that take that every spring. And then the others have spoke about PBIS, um, and and what has been done. Not saying, you know, wasn't worthy of a goal, but just highlighting that, um, we're, we have a really good team, um, and Mrs. McGuffey is kind of heading up from the admin level, um, just doing data-driven lessons, but the target behavior is allowing us to address students' needs more effectively. Um, every week there's, it's, we're focusing on hallway, we're focusing on X, um, and and those just keep changing. Um, and information's put out and then teachers do lessons during, um, Bulldog Power Hour, Tier Two Intervention, um, the Bulldog Connect, check-in, checkout, um, behavior contacts currently. Currently, we have, we have ten students on that, um, and we've had several that have graduated from it. And we've have a few that, and talking with the parents, that this is a, a really good intervention that is working and they wanna stay on it because it allows the kid to recognize, um, when, when things aren't going well or, and how to get back on track. So it's been very well received, um, and then calling being good. It's a positive referral initiative that identifies students who are demonstrating positive behavior and active performance. Um, in my opinion, you can never have enough of this in the building. Um, and, you know, from someone who in a previous role at the high school did a lot of discipline by myself, anytime you could do these phone calls, it just, it was a game changer. Uh, for the kid, for the parent, oftentimes you, you would have a, you have, we have kids that, parents only get negative communication and then when you can call and say, this happened, you know, they're relieved and it's, it's, it's totally a game changer and it might even redirect a kid from going down a not great path that school year to having a, a much more positive. So, um, I always, we always joke that we'd love to have twice as many good, kind of caught you being good compared to our negative, uh, referrals, but that's a goal, we'll, we'll get there someday. Um, so, any questions, um, or me in regards to the goals of the junior high?
Um, and looking at the designation scores, um, what would you attribute the large increase, twenty percent plus increase from twenty-two to twenty-three?
For the elementary math? Or just the total points?
Um, sixty-four point two-three to eighty-one point six.
Sure, a lot of that was the growth, uh, for, um, in, in our IAR test.
That's kind of still coming off that COVID.
I, and I think, exactly.
Hit in your stride.
Yep, and like I said, a lot of, I spoke to this, a lot of that is getting back to pre-COVID numbers. And our goal in the next couple of years is to get there and surpass it, so.
So with FastBridge, do you, I know Mrs. Hunter said they're a little bit frequentier. How does the junior high do it?
Three times, September, December, and May.
So in December, I, I bet you mine even be at fifty-seven or fifty-three percent based on looking how fast you guys improve with the IAR. Then would you have been obviously increased it for the end of the year?
Well, FastBridge and I are two different things.
True.
So it, there's not an exact correlation. My hope is that if we see some growth there, then that'll correlate over to IAR.
And something else, just to commend you, not once did you ever use the excuse that your building was the most crowded building in the entire district, how the learning environment is not the best for the students. Um, and junior high is a very hard and difficult age. I mean, as a parent, when I worked at schools, it's not easy. And you guys are obviously doing something right based on these scores, so. Don't take the foot off the accelerator, obviously, but keep doing what you're doing because.
And that's kudos to the staff, you know, to the kids, right? I mean, of resilience and just showing up and learning.
Can you say anything more about how those are going with portables or?
You know, it's.
Bathroom issues or weather issues or?
It hasn't gotten too cold yet. Um, we're wearing out the back doors, to be honest with you. I mean, we just had the locksmith there, um, because, you know, those are a set of doors that were entered, went out from in the morning and then after, at the end of the day, and now we have, now we have four classrooms out there, um, that, you know, depending on, because of the electives with ag every hour of the day. Um, but for the most part, again, kids are resilient, that's where classes, I mean, that's part of it. Um, uh, when it gets cold, I'm always a little worried because they're not gonna throw a coat on them to get out there, um, but.
There are those classes from bathrooms.
Uh, it's a good jaunt, um, you know, but we have a system set up that during the, during the day, they each, my fob broke, but there's a, you know, you have a fob, um, that we have, each teacher has two lanyards with a fob on them. Um, and those fobs are only programmed to work on those doors from eight-thirty to three-twenty-two. If a teacher loses it, they, they message me, within thirty seconds, it is shut off. So, um, it's a safety thing or whatnot, but, but would it be nice to have bathrooms much closer? Yeah, but I, I do think that the, uh, portable classroom teachers really push of like, hey, if, if you're like, try to use the restroom around our class because it is much harder to get back in, whatnot. And when it gets colder, I think that'll help with some of that, it'll curtail some of that of not wanting to go back in when it's cold, so.
I mean, you have seen junior high kids, right, that wear shorts, but it's.
They do. Yep, but overall, again, to your point, I mean, our junior high kids and our staff are very resilient and they just do what they need to do. So overall, I mean, portals are portals, so.
We can buy some portable items, so I was just.
I'd rather not.
They've got really nice portable bathrooms.
With running water and everything?
Yeah.
Pumped it?
It'd be great.
Whole other set of problems.
This is, this is amazing, Charles, thank you.
Any other questions?
Is four too many goals?
No. And because we have three major goals, the other one is something that's in the works, but I wanted to put it on there for, know that, you know, it's not, it's not really a smart goal, it's not measurable, it's just something we're going to achieve and we've been working on it. So really, we have, I don't wanna say we only have three goals because we have four. But that, the, the pace is more just a completion and, and we've been working on that one. But I want it to be in the forefront because I do think that college and career readiness is very important.
Those are, those are kind of portable bathrooms, you think about three goals.
Yeah.
It's like the magic.
Thank you.
Yep, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, um, I just wanna echo, start off by saying, um, the, the teamwork that takes place from top to bottom, um, uh, with, with clear, from this building on down the others, um, we, we benefit from that at the high school, right? Um, so some of that, uh, we're the lucky recipient of the, of the work that a lot of people do in order for our students to come to us the way that they are. So that's the first thing that I wanna point out. Um, our process is much the same, like Megan described hers. We start in the spring, um, looking at some data, um, and then taking that to, as an admin team and trying to refine that and talk about that with some building leadership. In the summer, we meet with our division heads, um, they get the first draft of the school improvement plan, uh, they provide the feedback. Uh, we refine it and when we come back to school, um, we give it back to them, the final draft for feedback. They can take it to their respective divisions, so staff can weigh in on it. Um, so that's kind of our process, where we landed that for today. Our first goal, um, is, is our college and career readiness school. And basically what we want, I'm not gonna read the whole thing, is what we want students to be ready for when they leave here, college, trade programs, employment, the military, and other pertinent avenues. Uh, we want the Mohammed Seymour graduate diploma to mean something and when employers, um, and and those post-secondary, um, opportunities come along, they understand what they're getting in one of our graduates. Um, and we wanna stay at, at the front of that, so that's why the goal was chosen. Um, some things that we're doing to, to continue to strive to improve in that is our, we have a college and career readiness team, which is made up of Kevin Flores, Jennifer Worley, and Simon Anderson. Um, and we're exposing our students to, um, college and career exploration, resume writing, trade programs, military options, mock interview, college and career information. Um, I wanna highlight guest speakers, we've, maybe some of you have had the opportunity to come in and speak, but we do a good job of really engaging, um, especially our sophomore class. Parents of those kids get a chance to come in and sign up and speak. Um, and so I think it's nice where sometimes, you know, they can actually know a friend's parent that comes in, um, and speak and, and kind of highlight the different opportunities they are for, um, you know, once they get out into the real world. And then soft skills, knowledge, um, and then the financial aid information. Our counselors held a financial literacy night, um, for, for our upperclassmen. We had eighty, we had eighty families attend that this year, so really encouraged by that number, um, to have, to have families, um, attend that. Um, the second activity is, is our partnership with colleges, trade schools, and, and, um, EFE, Education for Appointment through Parkland, we work with them on that and we wanna get some hands-on experiences. The, the workplace learning programs, and it's second year and we continue to get kids placed into that. And then we continue to work with, with Parkland on, on, on creating opportunities, um, you know, for our kids through Parkland with different jobs. Um, they had a construction program over the summer that some of our students attended in and they got, um, a certificate for it. Um, so that was, that was a good avenue for our students. We had, and we had kids take it, I don't think that will go into construction, um, which is kind of exciting in a way, if you stop and think about that. Um, and then the, the last one is, is we, we are working hard to say to students that maybe are not on that traditional college-bound track. And we wanna say to them, look, if you wanna go into the trades, it's proven that if you do go to Parkland and get a certificate in industrial tech or whatever it may be, you're gonna add value to yourself. And so we're trying to change that mindset of some kids to say, you, you, you can still go to college, it just looks different for you. Or you can still get, get, get that, uh, get that degree, it just looks a little bit different for you and that's okay. And one of the ways that we wanna do that is through the dual credit program. We've obviously expanded our, our dual credit offerings, um, and by doing that, um, you know, students have to test in, in order, you have the proficiency test in a source, score a certain score on the SAT in both math and English in order to qualify for those courses. Um, and we've had some kids run into some roadblocks on that. Um, so, you know, we've set a goal, you can see, um, how we measure the success of this goal down below. Um, of sixty-six percent of the junior class will meet the college readiness benchmark of the SAT in English, which is four-eighty, and then in math, which is five-forty, um, thus giving access to take dual credit courses. Um, you can see the historical data for comparison. It's a lofty goal, um, it's, it's a really lofty goal, um, but I think it's an important one and as we kind of shift towards, um, that, that data-driven culture that a lot of the other principals have talked about, um, as we get, as we get further down the road from COVID, that's one that's important to us. And then, like Mr. Mills discussed, um, you know, the, the college and career readiness pathways, indicators and pace, and the pace framework, it's soon gonna be a measure on the Illinois School Report Card for the high school. Um, they haven't given us the exact timeline, but we, our, our college and career readiness team have put a lot of work on that. We've actually had a few meetings with Dr. Begbie already this year, and that is something that's coming for us. I will say that when we attend meetings with EFE and other schools, I, I wanna brag on our team a little bit, um, and especially Mr. Flores, we, we are ahead of the game right now with, in comparison to some other schools, um, that, that, that are in our area. So we're, we're excited about that. So, questions about anything in relation to college and career readiness?
We have, like, um, I know we have amazing guidance counselors who will talk our kids through different options when it comes to their future option, future careers. Do we have any kind of like career center or anything to guide them through, like, beyond just your normal guidance counselor? Like to explore deeper in any way?
We don't have a career center, no, I mean, there are schools.
Is that difficult for like, for me?
You, you are not.
Okay.
I, I don't know that, um, I, I think what we've tried to do is get as close to a career center as we can, given the staffing that we have.
Sure.
You know, um, by creating a team and, and, and Mr. Flores kind of leads that team, um, you know, with that. So he does a lot, but I wouldn't say we have a center.
Okay.
Yeah, that's a good, that's a good question.
Do you want a center? Should we exploit it?
I, I mean, I think you have to look at the global needs of the district to say, okay, where does that fit in, right?
Well, it's a function of money instead.
So let's teach the kids to read and then we'll get career centers.
Sure.
Awesome, got it.
I mean, would a career center be nice, yes, right? Um, there's, it, it would do a lot of things, but, yeah.
All right, keep up.
Yeah.
Sorry to interrupt.
That's all right. Any other questions? Okay, um, goal number two is centered on attendance. And we wanted to improve our, uh, attendance rate to ninety-three point five percent and lower chronic absenteeism to twenty-five percent. Those are two percent improvements from previous years. Um, if you look at our average daily attendance, you can see that if we were to get to ninety-three point five, um, that gets us, you know, pre-COVID, um, a lot of talk tonight about that. For reference, um, when you look at two thousand twenty-three, um, at ninety-one point five, that's about an average of eighty-five kids a day at the high school that were absent, um, in what we look at. So, um, to, to put a number to that. Um, so, you know, I, we feel like a two percent on that is a, um, a realistically containable goal, especially when you look at who the kids are. Um, in terms of some repeat offenders, a truancy, and then we get into the chronic absenteeism. Um, you know, a, about if we, if we can get that thing down to twenty-five percent, it wasn't as good as two thousand nineteen, um, but it's realistic and where we're, where we're wanting to go and make that change. Um, current chronic, on, on November, excuse me, on September thirtieth, we are at fourteen point nine percent chronic absenteeism. And then on October thirtieth, we're at sixteen point eight. Those numbers will go up, I don't wanna paint the picture that that's where it's going to stay, um, but, but it's just like everybody else, it's a priority for us and so we're taking a hard look at that, emphasizing that. Um, it's in our, um, we are giving this data to the staff on a monthly basis in our, in our faculty meetings, yeah.
Do you follow the students, so the students that are chronically absent today?
Mm-hmm.
Were they the same ones in junior high and in elementary school?
That's a great question.
I would think so.
I, I think there's a way to do that, I, we have not, we have conversations with the junior high as freshmen come in about getting kids on the radar with that, but, um, we, I don't know, I'm sure that data is there, but it's not something that we looked at, yeah.
Just, I mean, there's a whole, in, in my perspective, you'd be with that.
Absolutely, yeah, for sure. Um, this is probably the single biggest thing that we're excited about, um, at the high school right now. Um, it's called the Bulldog Indicators, um, it's been live for us, just for a select few people, for about four weeks now, thanks to the work, um, with, with Mr. Williams and Maxenica and the tech team. Um, and this is a data collection tool that's taking multiple data points and putting it into one basic spreadsheet. Um, we're analyzing attendance rate, GPA, number of Fs in the grade book, number of referrals, missing assignments, um, activities involved in, um, and what it does is we have every kid in the high school on this spreadsheet that updates on a daily basis now and we have it all recorded. Uh, before, where you were trying to do all your different, you're pulling, you're pulling attendance data, you're pulling GPA, you're pulling all that stuff. And now we're feeding it all into one, um, it's, there's a, um, I wrote down earlier, when you talk about red on red, um, you know, we, we, we actually color-coded it. It's all color-coded, it's all highlighted, um, we're still learning how to use it, um, quite, I mean, we've only had it, um, we just give it to like our, our TI team, our freshman on track team, uh, but we can see, um, we can see, you know, okay, so this kid has an overall total score that's red, let's go back and analyze why. Um, it's interesting also to go back and track, like, our big push is to get kids involved and connected to schools. So we're tracking how many activities they're in, it's interesting to watch, you know, when their activities come live, how that impacts and what's going on. So I'm really excited about this, um, and, and, and what it's gonna bring and bring to the table for us. It was not an original idea, everything we do is stolen from somebody else, right? It's, it's, um, so, but it was, we, we, we got, we learned about this from another district that was doing it and have been able to make it try to work for us, so.
Is that like your program?
Um.
Like how, like, is it like a free lunchist program?
No, no.
I was gonna say, I can explain a little more because I sat next to Matt while he was developing. Uh, so it is a bunch of commands being run through a automated tool that we use that's free. Uh, and it will go through and export all the reports from Skybird for like attendance, uh, referrals, all that kind of information. It will export it into a bunch of different reports and then it will automatically copy all the data out of one, into one singular sheet that they refer from.
That's awesome.
And a color code to form.
And can you manipulate the data, like, once you get it?
Yeah, yeah, once they get it, I, it's a daily thing, I think, that goes out.
We get, it's going into a folder, so you can go back and look now, like, I can look at today, then I can look at last week at this time and so on. You can sort it by freshman, you can sort it by junior, I mean, you can sort by any of the categories that I can, yeah, yeah. Um, and I, I think, I think what's exciting is, is when we talk about early intervention, right? Um, getting to the why and then also the why. So what's the why behind some of this stuff that's happening? And, 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 you know, certainly, um, at our building, it changes a little bit, obviously, with age. And so hopefully, this is going to be a window into the why and we just, you know, we can use this to put a dent into some of these things. Um, another piece that we continue, if you remember from last year, the freshman on track goal, um, was, was big for us. And just as a reminder, the freshman on track metric is no more than one F in a core course of math, English, science, um, or social, social science, and students must earn at least five full credits a year. Again, being proactive instead of reactive, get kids off to a good start, the research, the, and data is there to support, to support that. Um, and so that's, that's one that we continue to monitor and give, and give, and give back, um, give feedback to our staff on as well. Questions about the attendance goal?
The monitoring the freshman on track, who makes that goal? Is that the, you and the staff that come up with that goal, like, no more than one F?
No, that's the state metric, so like in the, the, and the data that you got, that's all designated by the state, yeah.
I think it should be no more than one B.
Yeah, yeah. Any other questions? Okay, um, goal number three is our, is our culture and climate goal and it's centered on student voice, um, centered around student well-being. Um, this has been a goal of, this was a goal of ours last year and we've seen some success, um, in getting our students involved in decision-making process. Um, and we feel like, you know, one of the reasons for the goal is it gives them ownership in what's going on. Um, and, and I, and we feel like in our building, that's a big difference in contributing to student well-being. Some things, the Bulldog Connect team was mentioned earlier, that is into play for us as well and they're doing a good job of recognizing and celebrating student achievements, um, um, and fostering a sense of pride and belonging. Um, you know, with the daily announcements are getting some shout-outs, which we have to control, you can only have so many of those. Um, that we've got them, we've got monthly incentives going on, um, one that Mr. Mills started, it's probably one of the better ones we do. Uh, would you get your invitation to the Breakfast of Champions? If you've never been before, I would encourage you to go, it's a really special morning, um, for our students. Um, and then, you know, the, probably the one that takes place right now is, is the one-on-one meetings where we celebrate those little wins for the kids that need it, um, the positive referrals that take place, um, you know, uh, that, that, and, 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 and if a kid just makes it to school two days in a row, sometimes that's a win for a kid and they get a pretty good-sized pink bar, you know? Um, so how do we continue to do that? Um, we have a program or a group of staff members, um, that are, that we're referring to as Bulldog Bridge Builders. It's working with our, um, working to, um, with our diverse, um, student populations and their families. We've got some activities for, for that planned this year. And then, um, how do we bring our students alongside that process as well, so they have a voice with that? And we learn from them about what their experiences are as our, as our diverse, as our student body grows in diversity. Um, and then, you know, we, we really wanted to get students involved and give them leadership opportunities to get, to get ready uh, for when they leave high school and also contribute to what is going on, why they're there. Um, FFA, National Honor Society, if you remember now, is a paid position, it's a stipend position, which it hasn't been in the past. And so that, um, Caroline T. has done a good job of expanding that with the leadership board and different things taking place there. Homework hangout continues to be a place where not just homework takes place, but there's a lot of feedback we get from kids there. The Activity Fair is something that was our second Activity Fair, huge response on that. Um, we get a ton of positive feedback, which Dr. Julia enjoys hearing about Quest Food Service. Um, it's like the whole thing is very phenomenal, the kids love it, uh, they're very responsive and receptive to it. Um, the smoothie bar is a huge hit, I've had parents tell me, we've had to have a talk with our students, you're spending too much money. Um, and then lastly, I think Sonny and Jordan can attest to this, um, it, when we talk about maybe leadership, student leadership at the highest level, we have two students on the CST, of course, treaty team, and they have been, they've been really good.
They're not.
It's been very impressive.
Like, we, at, at our table last meeting, one of the moms was like, you think he could run for Board of Education? We don't think he could. I mean, they just are so well-spoken, excellent.
Done a good job, and, and again, I'll go just go back and highlight, I mean, that's the K-12 experience here at Mohammed, right? I mean, that, that's not just, that's not one thing, that's multitudes of things, you know, leading into, leading into that. Um, and then restorative practices, um, is, we use that on a daily basis, uh, all up and down the main office suite, from counselors to soul workers, to, um, administrators. And so we continue to zap to bring out student voice and, and, and resolve things. Um, how are we gonna measure? How we're going to measure this goal is the, the, the safety, and talk about owning goals, our safety. And so these two measures were student, based on student feedback alone. And the safety, we, we took a drop on safety on five essential surveys, so we've made that a huge priority with our staff about that. And then we want to go back and improve that score. And then classroom rigor, you might think that classroom rigor is like, what do you mean that needs to be measured and higher? Because certainly I think we have a reputation for some of our classes as being a little bit tough. But questions in, in classroom rigor that our students answer connects what I'm learning to life outside the classroom, encourages us to consider different solutions or points of view, doesn't let students, doesn't let students give up when the work gets hard, encourage students to show their ideas about things they are studying in class. So again, student voice, right? You know, what does that, what does that look like? So questions on goal three? Okay. A few highlights just from the building. Dr. Begbie touched on graduation rate, just the historical perspective of, of, of where we've been. So that was a, a credit to some, some staff on some interventions there. You know, that I think, that I think that helped, you know, with that. So excited about the graduation rate and the improvement there. Freshman on track I mentioned, you can see, you can see that on November thirtieth, we were at ninety-three point seven percent. And then on, I'm excited about this, on October thirtieth, we're at ninety-five point eight. So we'll, we'll see. I mean, it's, it's, it's a challenge, but again, and that team's got a, you know, a year of experience under the belt. So I think we're getting better and I'm hoping within the introduction of Bulldog Indicators, we can maybe hold that number steady. I wanted to provide the, we've added some, some, some significant courses over the last couple of years. So just wanted to provide a brief overview of where our enrollments were on the different courses. You can see that workplace learning is held right at the same. We've increased dual credit, the number of students taking dual credit and AP. If you break it down by course, by dual credit, you can see, you can see there, you know, that our students, the number of students taking dual, dual credit. ECCA, just as you may already know this, but that's our early college and career academy, the students go to Parkland to take the courses there. That number fluctuates. We weren't surprised, maybe that number dropped with our expanded offering at the high school. And it frees up their schedule to take them in-house, so they're not gone for three class periods out of the day. You know, Sullivan chose to do that. And then our last one is our AP enrollment. You can see the numbers there. I did want to point out that if you look in the middle column, you can see AP Computer Science Principles and AP Computer Science Applications. If you remember, we approved that program a few years ago. We've been alternating the years when we run that because we haven't had enough students. And this year, we had enough students to run both, both AP courses in the same year. So we haven't been able to do that before. So those are some numbers from the building in terms of some of the new courses we've added. So. Does anybody have any other questions I could answer?
I had a couple. First off, who's teaching the computer science courses?
Emily Waddell. She actually went back and went back to school and got some certification to teach it. So she's actually certified.
It seems like, you know, one of those is not like the others.
Yeah.
That seems very highly technical.
Yeah.
And my other question that related to goal three, the feedback that you got on safety for the, on the five essentials survey, was there anything?
Bathrooms.
Got it.
Yeah.
Bathrooms.
Yep. Yep.
I want to echo your comment earlier that it doesn't, it's not just our high school staff and teachers who made the high school. It's a great, it really is the staff, the, the teachers, our whole district. I mean, I am so impressed by you, by your leadership, but I'm also so impressed by all of you back there and your leadership and the amount of time and energy our staff pours into our students to get them achieving at the level that they're achieving at. It's really, it's amazing in college. I could go there.
It's also great to see how well that you all work together. That's just blown me away. You guys are all selfless in your own ways and it really shines through with the kids that are kind of out there at our school. So thank you. Thank you all.
Yes.
You know, really, I mean, I want to extract that we're the district person who are blessed. But that's really true. You look, you look at the numbers, you look at C funding. And these people that put together some statistics at the beginning of the year have us, I mean, we're second lowest in the area with funding ad hoc. There's one district, one percentage point below us. Otherwise, we have the least adequate funding than anybody around. But you look at the results, we, look at the, look at the presentations, particularly the first part of the presentation. And that is really credit to the administrators in this room, administrators that aren't here. Certainly every teacher, every parent professional, every staff member, everybody, are all employees perfect now. But as a group, they're pretty darn awesome and they do a great job every day with kids. And, and we've got, got kids that are for the, you know, most part engaged. Again, see, perhaps T is a little higher than me in my life. The most part they're engaged, but most part our parents are here and engaged and it shows. That's why we get the results from here. One more hundred and sixty-four percent ad hoc. So hats off to everybody. Take, take the message back to your buildings that we have people doing a great job every day and we know it and we share.
One of the things I'm going to, I'm going to touch on the teamwork again. One of the things that I appreciate about the way you all work together and on the way on, you all work with Dr. Lee, is that you are very supportive of one another and recognize the needs that you each have in your buildings. And then it's not a need-first mentality, it's us-first mentality, what can we do as a team? So I, I really want to make sure that you all are making your needs as obvious as possible to Dr. Lee, Dr. Begbie, so that that can get to us, so we can have an understanding of where we need to prioritize funding and manpower and energy. And if there's ever a time that you need, I mean, I don't think any of us can drive buses, but if there's anything else you need from us.
Yes, CDL.
I do.
Oh, I can drive a lot, should be four.
I, I was saying, I can completely drive a bus, but I could. My point is, should.
Sure, sure.
Make, we know what it's like. My point is, as, as needs come up, please, please let us know. Because we, as a team, are here to make sure that you guys have what you need to help our kids get what they need to get. Thank you for today.
Will we do something similar at the end of the school year to check in on goals? I don't know that it needs to be a full presentation again, but I'd be curious to see.
So typically you guys revisit your last year's goals in this presentation. Did you catch that?
Yeah, but I think you mean like when they're going to.
Yeah, I want to see progress.
Yeah. Oh, like a follow-up?
Yeah.
We generally don't, but we can church penny with that. Yeah.
We do a spring update.
Yeah. They do.
We won't have final numbers.
Yeah, I think, yeah, I don't think it needs to be a full presentation again, just if we can see the numbers, the goal and outcome.
It could be the graphics, because those are the best graphics we've ever had. Well, I explained it.
Oh, it was awesome. Your collaboration partnership is marvelous.
Oh, dear. Favorite meeting of the year.
Yeah, I mean, it's already been said, I'm going to say it in a different way. I'm a big fan of each of you, but as a team, I'm a bigger fan. And the results that we saw in the data at night, the progress and the improvements across the board, just thank you all and thanks to your teams. Keep up the great work.
Thanks. I'm going to go to the next item on our agenda, which is a closed session. A closed session is necessary tonight for the appointment and appointment of the paid participants and performance of the special employees and collective negotiating matters between the public body and the employees that they're representatives for deliberations concerning salary schedules for one or more classes of employees. Is there a motion to go into closed session for those reasons?
So.
Thank you. Megan, a second?
A second.
Thank you. So it's a roll call vote, please.
Kayla, Mr.?
Yes.
Rock?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
Lam?
Yes.
Seven?
Yes.
Nicole?
Sure.
Good morning. Yes. All right. We do not anticipate any business following closed session right now, Dr. Lee.
That's correct.
Okay, so we're going to turn off you two. Thank you. And we will.